I know many of you probably show six thirty on your watches in your cell phones. The clock on the back wall there still says six twenty-eight, so we're waiting until six thirty for that clock. That's kind of the official one clock that everybody up here sees, so thank you for your patience. I called to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, at six thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Koulias?
Here.
Commissioner Koulianis?
Here.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Here.
This evening's invocation will be given by Reverend Danny Bennett of the Gray City Church. If we may all stand and remain standing after the invocation, we'll have a pledge of allegiance.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that name Gray City Church may be new to some people. Our church is only about a year and a half old, a non-denominational church. We gather at Tarpon Springs Middle School on Sundays at nine thirty, so it's a privilege and an honor to be with you and to lead in this invocation. Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we are very mindful of who you are in our lives. And God, before we discuss really the business or the goodness of the City of Tarpon Springs, God, we're just calling upon your wisdom and your insight. We're so grateful for those that are in this room who lead our city so well, but God, we need your insight, we need your divine wisdom. And just coming off this Memorial Day weekend, God, we're also very mindful of those who paid the ultimate sacrifice for the freedoms that we get to enjoy each and every day of our lives. God, to just even freely gather here in this assembly, God, it's an honor, it's a privilege, and that doesn't happen in all countries. And to discuss the city and the business and even the just the freedoms that we enjoy, God, we're grateful for that, which also makes us mindful for all those who also serve locally. God, we're grateful for our local school administrators and faculty and teachers, and I know they're excited about the end of the school year, and so I pray, God, that you give them a restful summer. God, we're also very grateful for our first responders. God, those who in emergencies tend to run away, they run towards. And so we thank you for our local police and fire who keep us safe, who protect us in so many ways. So, God, we're grateful, we're thankful, and many times we need to just be mindful of all the blessings that you give to us, and so we just thank you for who we are in you. And all God's people said, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic with which this stands, a one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I want to announce that we have one item deferred, item fourteen, which is the Resolution twenty-two-four fifteen approving the Central Tarpon CRA finding of necessity. That's been deferred to June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Okay, let's turn to the agenda. We have two special presentations this evening, one by Ford Pinellas, Executive Director, Mr. Wynton Blanton, and also the second, which is by Ms. Joan Jennings, the Chairperson of the Public Art Committee and her annual report. City Manager Lacorius, I see Ms. Vincent up there, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to her.
I think she just...
You're just setting it up? Okay, well, we already talked. Mr. Blanton, if you could come forward, please. Mr. Blanton is the Executive Director of Ford Pinellas. They are responsible for countywide planning and also transportation, along with FDOT in many of the cities here in Pinellas County. This presentation this evening will be looking at transportation options into the future, which includes Tarpon Springs. I'd like to kind of frame this presentation as more of a trailer, like a movie trailer, of something that you're going to see more completely later on. There will be a community meeting on this. To me, this is something that I've been long waiting for, and I think it's one of the more important presentations that people of Tarpon Springs will hear, simply because of their concern over traffic on U. S. Nineteen and alternate Nineteen. So, Mr. Blanton, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. I'd like to introduce some of my colleagues that are with me today. Rodney Chapman of my staff, formerly Tarpon Springs Planner, and Jensen Hackett with the Florida Department of Transportation, and Jason Dolvik, a consultant to the Florida Department of Transportation. Jason is going to give the bulk of the presentation on behalf of FDOT, but I wanted to say a few words to kick things off. Ford Pinellas is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Pinellas County, has a responsibility to identify transportation priorities that are countywide in scope and to adopt a transportation improvement program every year. We are currently adopting a long-range transportation plan going out to the year twenty fifty, and projects can't go into our list of priorities or on our transportation improvement program if they are not in the long-range transportation plan. So it's a really important process. We'll be adopting the plan this fall and October. And one of the reasons that we wanted to come to you about this U. S. Nineteen plan is that in twenty seventeen, we removed an overpass at Tarpon Avenue on U. S. Nineteen from the long-range plan because there was some debate about the impacts and benefits and potential implications of building that interchange at that location. And our leverage to make sure we have the right conversation with the community is to keep things out of the long-range plan until we're ready to put them in, and we've got some consensus on what those projects are. Also, as we move into our October adoption of the twenty fifty long-range plan, we need to identify what's called a financially feasible long-range plan based on expected revenues over the year through the year twenty fifty. So one of the big questions we have for you this evening and for the community over the next month or so is what do you want to see happen in the U. S. Nineteen corridor? And then we can work with the Department of Transportation to identify the costs of this option versus just building the single interchanges, and then we'll determine whether that's financially feasible or if we need to look at other revenue options down the road to pay for it. So just trying to set it up that there are some decisions we'll need to make this fall, and we'll be taking this to our board in July and September to get the board's concurrence with the direction we're getting from the community. I'll get to the community outreach at the end of the presentation. I'll cover that in just a minute, but for now, I'd like to introduce Jason Dolvik to come and walk you through the presentation, and we look forward to the discussion.
Good afternoon, thank you all for having us, or good evening, apologize. Thanks for having us today. Give a overview of U. S. Nineteen, a little bit of the history over the last thirty years of U. S. Nineteen throughout Pinellas County, and some of the options that we're looking at that we want to, I guess, get the conversation started as we move forward, as Whit mentioned, with putting new projects into the long-range plan. So the current section of U. S. Nineteen that's out there today has been studied going back since nineteen ninety. The way we move projects forward is we go through a project development environmental study program or process, and the current PDNE study that's out there was approved back in May of nineteen ninety. Typically, we look twenty years ahead in the future as we design for our design year, so that looked at a design year of twenty-ten. Just for a reference point, it assumed an average annual daily traffic of around seventy-seven thousand vehicles, and this is just south of Tarpon Avenue, just to give a reference point. Again, this study that I'm referencing here from nineteen ninety, this is what advanced some of the projects that you see out there today. The overpasses at Bel Air, the overpass at Drew Street, at Coachman, at St. Edward five ninety, a lot of those projects going up from Gandy Boulevard, it went all the way up to Alt Nineteen. Now typically, we reevaluate these studies every ten to fifteen years. The last update to the U. S. Nineteen corridor study was completed in twenty fourteen. That looked at a design year of twenty forty. At that point, our traffic just south of Tarpon Avenue grew to ninety-eight thousand vehicles, average daily traffics in that corridor. And again, this was looking out twenty years, so we're about due for another revisit of the concept, and that's kind of why we're getting this conversation started today. So that study that was completed in twenty fourteen focused on the concepts that had been built to date, looking at the what we call a single-point urban interchange with six lanes in each direction, or sorry, three lanes in each direction elevated, and then signalized intersections underneath with frontage roads, one to two lanes in each direction, to provide access to the businesses, to communities, to residents along the corridor. Focus for U. S. Nineteen is really that long-distance traffic, but we also need to service the communities underneath and alongside our corridor and the businesses and the residents to make sure that it's safe for them to, safe and convenient for them to travel. So the twenty-fourteen study focused, really focused from St. Edward five eighty north. And so this graphic here just shows some of the concepts that we looked at, looked at various alternatives of existing, the no-build, the previous recommendation from the nineteen ninety study, and some few different interchange configurations and overpass locations, based on things that have changed, new densities, new land use along the corridor. And that's something that we typically look at in every one of these updates. So what did that project recommend? Well, it looked at similar concept before, the grade-separated, single-point urban interchange concepts, and it divided the corridor from five eighty up to north of Tarpon Avenue into six design segments. As Whit mentioned before, the northernmost segment did not move forward. It was removed from the long-range plan, but design and concept development did begin on the other five segments. Currently, the design is under construction today at five eighty up to north of Curlew Avenue. Now, that concept was very similar to the previous projects that were done down at St. Edward five ninety, at Sunset Point Road, and some other corridors, but we did make some enhancements to the corridor. Listening to the community, getting feedback from the users, from Ford Pinellas and other local governments such as yourselves, we want to put an added emphasis for multimodal accommodations and bike pedestrian accommodations. So one thing that we did on the design segment that's under construction today is we looked at how can we add additional pedestrian crossings across U. S. Nineteen? When the projects were built from Whitney Road up to St. Edward sixty, there was a long, a large gap between Bel Air to Seville, about almost two-mile gap without a pedestrian crossing. So we went back after the fact, built a pedestrian overpass at Haran Boulevard, about halfway between the point. And that really got us thinking, we need to add these accommodations in from the beginning. Much easier to build these overpasses, these pedestrian multimodal accommodations from the beginning as opposed to retrofitting it after the fact. So working with Ford Pinellas, we looked at a goal. Our goal was, can we have a pedestrian crossing every quarter mile? It's a big ask, it's something that we weren't quite able to make on that segment from five eighty to Curlew, but we were able to make it about a half-mile spacing. So that's what you see on this graphic here. Down below, you see the blue circles show those added pedestrian crossings that we're able to accommodate. We looked at a number of different ways of accommodating these pedestrian crossings. On the upper right corner is a rendering of a pedestrian overpass that's constructed. If you've driven that corridor, the bridge is up there today. We haven't, it's not able to be used by pedestrians. We're still building the walkways, but the bridge is up and over U. S. Nineteen today, and that's right at North Side Drive. Further south of there, we have what we call a U-turn overpass near Boy Scout Road, and then there's a pedestrian throughway just south of Republic Drive. Again, these are opportunities for pedestrians to cross underneath U. S. Nineteen without conflicting with the high-speed traffic on those elevated lanes. So looking, sorry, and one other thing I did want to mention here is we also, in coordination with Ford Pinellas and Pinellas County, we decided to provide wider sidewalks on this segment as well. So typically, we have a five-to-six-foot sidewalk. These corridors have ten-foot-wide sidewalks to allow bikes and pedestrians to utilize those along the business access. So looking at some of those design enhancements and moving it forward into the segments that were under design, going up through Tampa, Nebraska, Alderman, going all the way up to just north of Klosterman, we looked at how best can we accommodate these additional pedestrian crossings? And this graphic up here shows the pedestrian crossings that we have accommodated, whether through the interchanges that we have on the previous segments going further south, the pedestrian overpass bridges, like I just showed you at North Side Drive, and the pedestrian throughway crossings underneath an at-grade crossing of the frontage lanes, typically with a flashing beacon warning signs to alert drivers and alert the pedestrians, but allows them not to conflict with the high-speed traffic along U. S. Nineteen. And here's just a couple additional renderings showing the overpass at North Side again, and then the pedestrian throughway that I mentioned before, with those flashing beacons to allow the crossing of the single-lane frontage roads. So now that we've talked on the projects that are under construction today, we wanted to, you know, as part of this update and getting the conversation started, was make sure as we advance the other projects forward in design and consider adding or not adding an overpass up in the area of Tarpon Avenue, what should we look at? What are the other options that are available? And this is the beginning of that kind of teaser, that trailer that the mayor mentioned, that we're going to come back, we're going to discuss with yourselves, discuss with other organizations and the community of, these are some other things that could be considered as we do our latest update. So I'll step through these three main options that we've looked at at this point. Again, these may not be all the options we look at, but these are three of the early ideas that we did want to bring to you for discussion to get the process started. So the purpose of this study and really the focus was from Tarpon Avenue up to Alt Nineteen. It's about a seven-and-a-half-mile corridor where we looked at some of these other options to be considered. So just as kind of a comparison, these are two different typical sections that show the traditional grade-separated typical section that we look at on the south end, and that's what's proposed, Nebraska, Tampa, further south, where we have this, what we call an embankment grade separation, where you do have a walled section to accommodate and create these crossings for the traffic underneath. On the top is what we're considering and what we're starting the conversation for is what we call a viaduct typical section. Again, this is similar to, if you've been over in South Tampa along Gandy Boulevard, it's the Selman West Extension, very similar typical section, also One Hundred and Eighteenth Avenue as part of the newly opened Gateway Expressway, where you have your elevated facility with foundations in the median so you can avoid impacts to the local traffic, still accommodate the business access, provide a lot more opportunities for crossing underneath the roadway by having this longer bridge section. Also, we've considered raising this to a higher elevation to provide an enhanced view shed across U. S. Nineteen. So again, focusing on this study and the seven-and-a-half miles that we're looking at, most of the viaduct's feasibility was from south of Alderman Road to right around Tarpon Avenue. Whether it ends just south of Tarpon Avenue or just north of Tarpon Avenue is something that can be worked out as we move forward with this, I guess, outreach section. But we wanted to look and focus on these segments for our brainstorming. So again, this is the typical section of the viaducts. Again, it accommodates the six lanes elevated, three lanes in each direction, and we really need those three lanes in each direction to carry the long-distance travelers throughout the corridor. There is a lot of demand from Pasco County and further south Clearwater Largo, Pinellas Park, to go throughout the corridor, but there's also a lot of access, a lot of need for residents that live along U. S. Nineteen, especially through this section from Alderman up to Tarpon Avenue, where they do want to go to their local businesses along that seven-and-a-half-mile stretch, but a lot of times also need to go to locations further north and further south and would make use of this elevated facility. So this typical section that we have here accommodates anywhere from one to three lanes in each direction along the frontage lanes, maintains those six-lane elevated, and then opens up a large area underneath the overpass that could be used for pedestrian crossings, for U-turn movements, or other opportunities, other ways to activate the median, which Whit can mention a little bit later on, but also provides those ten-foot sidewalks along the right-of-way that I mentioned before, fronting up to businesses, residents. So our first option with the viaduct, and our first thought was, can we just have a seven-and-a-half-mile bridge? Is there enough demand for traffic going from Pasco to Clearwater that we could take all the volumes that makes that long trip, pull it off the surface streets so we could still accommodate an acceptable level of service at the intersections underneath? So as we looked at that, we first, as you can see here, we've got several ramps that were originally identified in the previous twenty-fourteen study, and we said, what if we eliminate these ramps? What does that do to the volumes along the corridor? Well, we quickly found out that when you eliminate these ramps that serve seventeen hundred vehicles in the peak hour, nine hundred vehicles in the peak hour, the demand is still there to go to the side streets, to still go to the businesses. And when they do not have these ramp opportunities to go from the elevated section to the at-grade section, they'll have to stay at-grade, and that quickly draws up the volumes along the corridor. And we're looking at, instead of the one to three lanes, we're looking at four to five lanes in each direction. So we quickly came to the assessment, all right, we need to have a concept that allows some ramps to access the elevated to the at-grade along the corridor. So just as a comparison here, so looking at the viaduct, as I mentioned before, on the bottom, we have what would be a traditional profile along U. S. Nineteen, where you very frequently go up and down to allow these crossings underneath U. S. Nineteen, and it's typically the walled embankment. So we've got it shown here, these brown shapes are the gray MSC walls, mechanically stabilized earth walls that you see up and down U. S. Nineteen that does block the view shed significantly. So with the viaduct typical section, again, it would be one large bridge going that full, in this case, two, three miles of this corridor, with instead of sixteen-and-a-half feet above ground, it's, you know, we've got twenty-five feet, or in this case, we're showing the elevation from the surface of the road to the, or from the at-grade road to the top road. So that's why it shows the twenty-six and the thirty-six. So since based on our traffic analysis, we determined one long bridge could not accommodate the number of users, we said, all right, how can we add these ramps back in but still provide some of the enhancements that this viaduct bridge could offer the community? And so that's how we came up with what we called a hybrid idea. And again, this isn't set in stone, but it's one thing that we're bringing out there to the community to get some feedback. So this, comparing on the bottom, which would be the traditional design, and the top is the hybrid viaduct design, you can see that the bridges are much higher and much longer. So the amount where you need to have the ramps that allow you to go between the two different roadway segments is a much shorter distance. This does allow us to, I guess, locate those ramps based on users, based on different land uses along the corridor, to find the most efficient location for these ramps, but also to provide the best views and the best, I guess, open feeling for the community along the corridor. And again, this is going from instead of a, you know, a thirteen-foot clearance like you have there at the bottom at the very south end, going up to more of a thirty-six-foot elevation through there, so much higher, much more open. So again, as we mentioned before, this is kind of early in the process, but as we start looking at finalizing designs for concept, finalizing costs, we want to get the feedback from the community to see, do we need to add additional features? Are there some things you don't want us to look at? What are the areas we need to prioritize along the corridor so we can give you the answers that you need to make an informed decision? So we're working on the updated concepts, some updated options to better allow you to visualize the, what's possible. And just another quick comparison on this graphic that we have here on the screen, the left side versus the right side. On the right side, you can see this is the U-turn overpass down at Boy Scout Road, just south of North Side Drive, south of Curlew Avenue, where you can see it's about a twenty-foot clearance underneath this bridge structure, probably more like eighteen, but you can see the walled embankment at the end side, that walled earth section compared to the left, which is the viaduct or the hybrid viaduct concept. Again, the twenty-five-plus-foot clearance underneath the bridge and the bridge that extends, you know, upwards of a thousand, two thousand feet to provide a much longer, much more open and bright corridor along U. S. Nineteen. I think, was this your slide where you're going to take over? Oh, sorry, here we go.
So we've got a number of decisions that we need feedback on, and one of those is the frontage roads themselves, because as Jason mentioned, frontage roads are meant to maximize property access and not speed and throughput. That's what you're up on the main line for. And our observations of the frontage roads further south on U. S. Nineteen is that a lot of times people use them to bypass congestion on the main line, and they use it to just do a quick get-around, and they're not going to... get-around, and they're not going to the property access, and they're driving pretty fast. So we have asked DOT to take a close look at considering some retrofits to those frontage roads to make them safer for the people who live along those, those roadways. In this design, what we're really trying to do is have a target speed of about 35 miles an hour on the frontage roads. And if you're at three or four lanes, I don't think you can get there. I think you're going to end up with people driving a lot faster than 35 miles an hour. So where those ramps are located and how many of those ramps we have are going to be really key. So I think that's going to be one big decision, and we'd like the community's feedback on that. Where is the best placing, placement of those ramps in those locations? Where do we need to ensure pedestrian crossings and bicycle crossings to get to the east or the west side of US 19? What are we trying to connect as a community? The other considerations that go into all of this is maybe under that main line throughway for US 19, you've now elevated it, you've created a good bit of space in there. Orlando is activating the area under I-4 in their downtown area. It's called the Bridge District or the Under-I District, and it's because historically, the more affluent parts of downtown Orlando were on the east side, and the less affluent areas were on the west side, and I-4 was seen as a barrier to economic opportunity for many folks. So Orlando has been working to activate that space underneath, and you can't build structures, but you can put in a lot of activities. You can put in a lot of recreational activities, you could put in art, you could have parks, you could have a pickleball court. I mean, I'm making stuff up, but these are things that we want to hear from the community. If there's a need, if there's something missing in the community, this would be accessible, and it would be, it would be covered, and so a large part out of the year, you know, maybe it's free from some of the elements. I'm kind of being a little facetious, but it's serious. This is, you know, this is an area that could be considered open space to the community. So our plans are to have a community workshop and open house, and we're leaning towards some dates, June 18th and June 20th, but I can't confirm that right now. We are setting up meetings with the Chambers of Commerce here in Tarpon Springs and also in Palm Harbor. A few years ago, when we were considering the impacts of this roadway, we held a couple of business roundtable meetings that were, you know, morning sessions for an hour or so, two hours, to just have more of a deeper Q and A discussion with people who might be affected by, by these facilities. And we found that very helpful. So we're looking to repeat a lot of those activities over the next month to six weeks and, and gain some additional insight for the long-range plan. Well, I want to be real clear, what we have right now that's funded is just a little bit of right-of-way and a little bit of preliminary design. We do not have anything really funded to go into design or, or construct any of this. So that would be after we adopt the long-range plan, and Ford Pinellas would then look to make whatever the community decides a priority that we would then seek to be funded in our Transportation Improvement Program. So it's really early. It's a great opportunity to engage the community, not just in this next six weeks, but once we adopt the long-range plan, if we start to get money together and advance design, then that's going to be another great opportunity for the community to really have some input into the actual design of the roadway. So we have our contact information. I'm happy to have folks reach out to me. I'll pass along things to FDOT, but you also have the contact of the Department of Transportation staff here as well. So I'll turn it over back to Mayor and the Commission for questions, comments, and Jason, I'll do our best.
I just have two. Again, it's a teaser, a trailer. The discussions will be more in-depth. I know you probably don't have answers to a lot of the questions that might be asked as far as the impacts, that would all be part of the study. The two things that I just wanted for my self clarification, the Mango Street pedestrian crossing that we showed early on, that's actually part of the current construction plan as I, as I took it?
Mango Street. I'm not real familiar where Mango Street is. Okay, south of Emo. You want to come up here?
So, so that project was, did start design, but the design was put on hold, so that is not currently moving forward.
Okay.
The design has to be re-advertised before that moves forward again.
We'll pick that up with Ford Pinellas. The, the other part of it was the, there wasn't anything said about the bridge. And I know that's always been the bottleneck at this end. We go from eight lanes at Tarpon Avenue down to six lanes on the north side of that. And I suspect that the part of that is the bottleneck of the bridge. Is there anything planned for that, or will this whole concept of the, the corridor, the elevated roadway be kind of funneled into that at some point?
As of, as of right now, the, the traffic level still showed six lanes back from the 2040 numbers that we did in 2014, still showed a six-lane bridge going over the Anclot River. Again, when we do update it based on, you know, 2050 numbers, that would be revisited. But right now, it's typically gone from south to north as we've done these improvements.
Yeah, that's, that's a hard nut to crack anyway. I understand that. Let me go to the Commission, see if they've got any comments or questions, and we'll, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask the residents if they've got anything that they'd like to say. Any Vice Mayor Eisen, do you have anything?
Always. The first question I had, hi, hi Whit. I got to see this presentation already when I was at Ford Pinellas. So the numbers that you quoted, the 77,000 and the 98,000, was that a winter number or a summer number?
Sorry, it's annualized, so it's a, you know, the average day. So it's, you know, maybe a spring number. Well, I guess spring would probably be higher than some others. But yeah, it's, when we do look at our daily traffic, then we do, do a seasonal factor. But just for big picture here, it's a average annual daily traffic number. So it's the average of the high season and the low season.
So it's, those are larger numbers than that will be? That's where I was going with that?
Yes, there's definitely some days where that number is higher.
So my second question or observation, is it the goal more so to move pedestrian across safely, or is it more to moving a great deal of traffic up above?
Well, I think that's why we have this balanced approach with the viaduct and the frontage roads. We need to move, we need to move traffic, excuse me, north-south quickly and efficiently. And so that's probably the primary objective of US 19. It's on the Strategic Intermodal System. It is a major urban corridor for the region. However, it's lined with businesses and apartments. So there is a balancing act, and that's why having that permeability underneath, we think is important, not just for Tarpon Springs, but for Palm Harbor as well, because of the density of development along the corridor. So I would say that there's probably a primary consideration of making sure we're anticipating the regional needs of traffic moving north and south in this part of, of the region. But I would say we would probably give it just about equal weight to have that east-west movement facilitated for local economic activity and, and just personal activity.
Because you see in the first two diagrams that you have, where it's going up and down in a slope, you're kind of limited to access from one side to the other for the whole entire time that that's like that. And that's why I'm leaning more towards giving a statement of, that I'd like to see the whole thing elevated, because down the road, you have then the option, if we did need more cross-sections, we can more readily get that installed if we find that we need that. When you're doing the other two approaches, you're kind of stuck with the tunnels, and there would be no future that we, we would be locked into it. We wouldn't be able to utilize it. The other reason is, in the event of a storm, a lot of people on that highway just, they slow down to a crawl or stop, and they're not really considering, the person doesn't see in behind. This way, they could have a place possibly that they could go down, you know, for our heavy-duty storms and, and be out of the picture. So I'm more leaning towards number three, the fully elevated. But in doing so, I want to make sure that the ramps to get on and off that are before the main roads and after the main roads, so that we can get them, people to be able to come down to use Commerce. So that's that. I, also, this is my last question, why do we have 10-foot sides on the upper deck?
Oh, yes, sure. Yeah, so based on the, the volume of traffic that's projected and the speeds, in order to meet both our federal and state criteria, a 10-foot shoulder is needed based on these volumes and these speeds. It's for refuge. So if you do have breakdowns, if you do have law enforcement, gives the ability for a vehicle to safely pull over, get out of the traffic lane, whether it's for a breakdown or enforcement or response there.
Well, I appreciate that, and I understand it. The only problem I have with it is also it's a, it's a storage facility for pieces of cars that are all along it and items. So, you know, there's, there's a, it's a catch 22. It's good for one, but bad for others. Thank you. I appreciate the presentation, and I look forward to inputting whatever I can when I'm on Ford Pinellas. Thank you.
Commissioner Cullias.
Yes, Mr. Blanton, we talked about this study for about seven miles. Would you equate that to that, the highway intersection that's done a little bit after Dunedin going to St. Pete or about Clearwater area?
The Gateway Expressway, the new one that just opened? Is that what you're asking?
No, with all the highway intersection that went up.
For US 19 further south? Yeah, there's, there's similar kind of up and down motion for that roadway as well.
My main concern is the impact it's going to have to the businesses, and I'm not sure how much control, even with the citizens' input or the Board of Commissioners, we really have in this whole matter. But just being able to access businesses all across, up and down that area is crucial, as well as the pedestrian traffic going east to west. Do you have an idea of how long that construction was that happened in that area, in the Clearwater area?
Well, I wasn't here during all that construction. I got here in 2015, and most of it was done. But the project that's under construction now was started in 2023, and will be wrapped up in 2029. So it's about a five-to-six-year construction period.
Okay.
For, it's from Main Street up to just north of Curlew Road.
Well, my main concern is with the frontage roads and the businesses. I do believe it's going to have an impact, but it's going to inconvenience us, but we understand the, what's happening to our Tampa Bay area as a whole. And it is nice to be able to get to St. Pete once you get to that 580 area relatively quickly. So I can see the benefit once it's done. So I appreciate the efforts put in and just hope that the residents and the boards can help give as much input as possible.
I think it's worth noting also that we, we asked the department to take a real close look at whether we even needed to build interchanges up here. The lake being on the east side, I kind of just intuitively thought that, well, you can just keep your traffic signals and push all the green time on the north-south movement, and maybe you don't need to build the interchanges, because in some of these roads, crossroads, they're just not that, there's just not that much traffic going east-west. But the department really looked at it, and I give them credit because they looked at it very carefully as, as we asked. And they feel like because of some access conflicts, say to the Walmart, and some, and just overall traffic volumes, that there is going to be a need to physically separate US 19 from the cross streets and not just go with that great intersection. So we tested that concept, it's not viable. So now we're trying to, what's the best fit for the community, recognizing the considerations you have? And, you know, I got in a lot of trouble at a meeting in Palm Harbor because I said, you know, if you just look south at what happened on US 19, you can see that you probably are looking at a redeveloping corridor. And that's, that's been the evidence, because we had a lot of retail that was down in Clearwater and in the Largo area, and there's not as much retail anymore. It's now becoming apartment complexes. And there were a lot of people who didn't like that answer. So we want to try and find a way to preserve as much of the existing businesses as we can and not create a mechanism that's just going to force redevelopment, because you've lost your visibility and you've lost your access. So I think the department's come up with some good options, but now the next step is hearing from the community and seeing what we can advance.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Cullias.
Thank you, gentlemen. Just so I'm clear and the, and the citizens are clear, there, there are no plans to build an overpass on Tarpon Avenue?
Not currently.
Not currently?
We have an approved PDNE, which is the environmental study that the department did in 1990 and updated in 2014. The federal government and the state of Florida have signed off on that PDNE to build overpasses. However, by taking it out of our long-range plan, they cannot move forward until we put it back in our long-range plan.
Well, I hope you don't, from my standpoint. You know, our, we're dependent on tourism, probably as much if not more than any other community in, in Pinellas County. And it's, it's, I measure it's about three-quarter of a mile from US 19 to our downtown tourist area. So having people driving by and flying by US 19 down, past Tarpon Avenue could be destructive for our tourist people turning and taking a left or right to come into Tarpon Springs. And, and our sponge docks aren't much farther from US 19 than that. So, yeah, I would definitely be concerned about that, but you're saying we don't have that immediate concern.
And, and nothing here is immediate. So, you know, we work in pretty long timeframes, but yes, sir, it's with, with it not being in the long-range plan, that's not really an option, but that's why we're having the conversation. And so we need to hear from the, from the community and ultimately from the Board of Commissioners. You know, the Department of Transportation doesn't like to impose transportation projects on communities. They like to have support in the community. But this being a strategic intermodal system, you know, there is a, there is a pretty high standard for what this roadway is supposed to do. And US 19 is meant to move regional traffic. So we have to kind of have that balance between community access and regional mobility.
But yeah, as I say, US 19 feeds our, our economy.
Sure, that's right.
I, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato, got anything?
My, my concerns too, were Commissioner Cullias. Cullias has discussed the businesses and their ability to operate. That's most important, and it looks like you are considering that. So we'll see what we get out of, I mean, the final.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, if, if anything happened, when, when would we be looking as far as a timeframe for breaking ground, just to give this commission a little thought? Be realistic about it, please.
I'll have Jensen tell you that one. It's really hard to predict because it's based on the revenues that are coming in. And what the state does is they update their strategic intermodal system, cost feasible plan. How, how often? About every five years or so? Yeah, so every five years. We're, we're waiting on that one. We should get that here in the next month or so, I hope. And that'll have an identification there. But if it's not cost feasible now, then we'll wait five years and we'll reevaluate it. So I would say the earliest for any kind of construction out there would be probably after 2030.
After 2030? Okay. Thank you, that's what I want to know. I'm going to go to the public and see if they've got any comments.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the public, please come forward?
Graham Jones, 2056 North Point Alexis Drive, Tarpon Springs. We're very fortunate here in Tarpon in that when the city wants to do something about tearing up streets and so on, we have a mechanism where the public are allowed to, well, encouraged to comment online. The maps, the diagrams, the pictures, the text and so on is all published online by the city and, and its fine staff. And we get to look at it and examine it and, and at our leisure, make reasoned and hopefully sensible comments about what's going on, and then the planning staff take these things into consideration when they're making their final plans. So I am happy that you're having some public meetings, and I'm delighted that you're coming to things like this. But if you're not, if you are planning on having a public forum online, I'd certainly like to know what it is. And if you're not, I think I'd like to know why not, because most of us citizens these days, while we love and admire our commissioners, and they've taken the place of the priesthood for most of us in interceding between citizens and city, it's really nice to be able to make our voices heard and, and our written words seen directly from us to the people who are using those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anybody else? Ms. Taylor?
Katie Taylor, 1991 Douglas Lane, Tarpon Springs, Florida.
Katie Taylor, 1991 Douglas Lane, Tarpon Springs, Florida. Glad to be in the presence of the Florida Department of Transportation because the area of US-19 and Spruce on the east, on the west side, what is it? Live Oak on the west side, Spruce on the east side. That corridor, when you're coming out of Alternate 19 from Greek Town or the tourist area and you take Live Oak all the way around to Alternate 19 because a lot of people take that avenue, when you get to Lowe's on the right-hand side just before you get to 19, traffic backs up because at that light, you can go straight across, which is going to be Spruce on the other side, or you can make a right-hand turn or a left-hand turn. The right-hand turn lane has a designated right-hand turn. But if you're going straight across to the other side, which is the east side, you have to, like, take a chance, either going straight because cars, there's no turning lights. You need a turning light to go left or one that says you go straight because right now you don't. Traffic backs all the way up past Lowe's, and we're crossing double lines. So if you're going to put any kind of bridge or avenues on US-19, you need to look at that because if that's an off-ramp, you already have a problem. Those streets need to be marked, and they need to have lights on the east side and the west side, left-turning light and right-turning light, and lights that say go straight because it's a crisscross of a Pili Dikka circle right now. So can anything be done about those areas? Can that be looked at at the corner of Live Oak and Spruce on US-19?
I'm sure they'll look at it, Ms. Taylor. Mr. Blanton could ask you, answer the question and probably tell you the same thing. And they'll just need to get more information than, from what you described this evening. Mr. Blanton?
Yeah, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. What we're talking about here is a pretty long-term concept, but that sounds like a short-term issue that's happening now. So we can work with the department to see if there's a safety or congestion analysis that they can do in the short term to see if there's something that, kind of a quick build that can be done to make that a little bit better.
So you begin right back with the commissioners?
We'll get with them and see what we can do, yeah. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
I'd like to just address the first comment.
Oh, please do.
The online comment, great comment. We really appreciate that. We try to do that every time, so we will have an online component.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Anybody else? No, that's it.
Okay. Did you say you wanted to address the first comment?
Oh, well, I did. We just will have an online mechanism for people to weigh in.
Is there anybody else? Okay, Mr. Morey, do you have anybody online that wants to make a comment?
One in attendance at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blanton, Ms. Vincent, go ahead.
Just to the first comment, we do have, on our Connect Tarpon site, we do have a US-19 information page up. We put it up in response to this. So we'll continue to coordinate. Whatever they're pushing out, we'll push out and similarly get online input as well.
Okay. Mr. Blanton, thank you very much. And, gentlemen, I appreciate you all being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much for accommodating us tonight. Appreciate it.
Next presentation is our Public Art Committee annual play-in. And you've got Ms. Diane Woods, our Cultural Affairs Director, and also Ms. Joan Jennings, our chairperson of the Public Art Committee here this evening for us.
Good evening, Diane Wood, Cultural and Civic Services Director. The Public Art Committee has been very active in the last year, and our Chair, Joan Jennings, is going to give you an overview of their activities and future plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Vaticiota, Commissioners, residents. My name is Joan Jennings, and I chair the City of Tarpon Springs Public Art Committee. Like other city boards, we are a group of knowledgeable and enthusiastic volunteers that answers to the Board of Commissioners. So I'm going to throw us all at your collective mercy to approve what we've been doing for the past year. This is a table of our budget and expenditures. We have been good stewards of our funds obtained through levies on developments in excess of $1 million. We do not use any taxpayer dollars. The first category is maintenance. The second was for the illuminated art boxes that are on the sponge docks. We have operating expenses, and this year there were two artists' fees. This is our balance. We started the fiscal year in 2023 with $147,356. We received $62,598 in revenues. Our total expenditures were only $19,186.77, and that leaves us with a balance as of 5/28 today These were our accomplishments for this year. We've done yet another round in the illuminated art boxes. We've done a mural on Riverside Park concession stand. We did a mural honoring Coach Rudy Royal in Dorset Park and our ongoing Black Heritage Project. The images included in the latest round of artworks in the illuminated art boxes, this year they've been coordinated by Vice Chair Graham Jones. And upcoming, our PAC member Sonia McGrath will coordinate the next round of entries. We did murals on the concession stand at Riverside Park. Artist Jonathan Ramirez painted all four walls of the concession stand. Each wall represents a sport played at the park. We've gotten nothing but complimentary remarks about the murals, and Jonathan Ramirez in particular was very good to work with. Working with the Royal family, who submitted a design and artist for inclusion on the wall of the recently renovated Dorset Park concession stand, the artist Nolan Anderson submitted a digital image, which was transferred to an applique, which was then applied to a prepared wall by Speed Pro. As the building may be slated for future work, this was felt to be more efficient should it make it easier to replace the mural. Unhappily, I learned this morning that the mural was vandalized. Our city liaison, Diane Wood, is following up on its repair. In 2020, a project suggesting the creation of a Black Heritage Project was brought before the Board of Commissioners in the form of a bronze statue of an Afro-Bahamian sponge hooker. The project received no responses to the call to artists. It was modified to become two installations at two sites with ties to the early African-American population in Tarpon Springs. A selection panel, also known as a jury, of locals with extensive experience in various disciplines was created. A call to artists was sent out, and the PAC received 14 proposals. The panel selected local artist Stephen Oliver to create two pieces, one at the corner of South Gross Avenue and East MLK Boulevard in the Union Academy neighborhood, honoring the contributions of the Black community in modern times, and another as a tribute to the original Black sponge hookers on the sponge docks at a site on the Anclot River where historically, immersion baptisms were performed. This is the Union Academy site. On the left is the installation as it appears today, and on the right was the original artist's rendering. The sculpture emulates a sponge hooking crawl or corral that was used by the early Afro-Bahamians in the vicinity. On the right is a photograph of the wall in a little more detail. Phase two was a Wayfinder sign to direct visitors to the Contemplative Archway on the river. It's installed to the left of the tourist information building on the sponge docks and replaced in acrylic dolphin. This was the original artist's rendering, and this is the way it looks today. Phase three is an expository arch containing historic photographs and images from the early Afro-Bahamian sponge hookers and divers to be installed at the northern edge of the City Marina parking lot along the Anclot River, close to a historic baptismal site. Thank you to Mark Lacouris and Public Works. There will be seating and shade to allow visitors to contemplate the images and texts. And we are enhancing the message of the sculpture with QR codes to provide additional information. We've been working with Director of Economic Development Karen Lemmons. The city created a CRA photo and mural grant program. The link to it is on the slide. And we just got one application for this grant, which was the Five Branches Brewery, a new location at Hibiscus Street. Muralist Emily Taman created, submitted to us a mural for approval, and we made some slight modifications to it, and it was done on the building. We have some proposed projects, the continuation of the illuminated art boxes, enhanced mapping of the artwork in Tarpon Springs, and QR codes that will provide additional information on the art pieces. Dr. Mary Jane Safford's statue slash art project, an Afro-Bahamian sponge hooker statue, the exploration of some projects for Craig Park, and the exploration of a possible privately donated marble sculpture. In cooperation with Tarpon Arts, Diane Wood and Brandon Grok, an interactive map of all Tarpon Springs public art projects was created and will be expanded using QR codes and extended textual information. This is how the map looks on the Tarpon Arts site. And the QR codes on the pieces will link to fuller explanations of the art and artists. This is the Dr. Mary Jane Safford statue project. The proposed location is on the grounds of the Safford House Museum, which is city-owned. The significance, it was suggested by Elizabeth Kochman, a physician who was also the author of the biography, Mary Jane Safford, M.D., colon, and the indomitable might. Dr. Safford was four foot 11 inches. She was a might. In the interest of time, full text of her email detailing the value of this project and Dr. Safford's contribution can be forwarded on request. This is the proposed site. The PAC member chairing this project is Graham Jones. The process, which is, you know, done for all projects like this, we're going to need city and site approval on the lawn of the Safford House, at which point we will determine a budget and create a selection committee. Okay, another proposed project, oops, sorry, is the Afro-Bahamian sponge hooker statue. The PAC member chairing the project is Elainey Beba Christopoulos. Again, same process as the other statue. We need city and site approval, determination of budget, and a selection committee. The, what I would like to ask the board tonight is a consensus approval for the two proposed projects. All right, the City of Tarpon Springs Public Art Committee consists of Vice Chair Graham Jones, Beba Christopoulos, Sonia McGrath, Nick Toth, and alternates Dawn Arbitallo and Katie Taylor. I know that Graham and Katie are here tonight. Are there any other members of the committee? I guess not. Well, thank you very much. The Tarpon Springs Public Art Committee wishes to thank the Board of Commissioners, city manager's staff, and we are excited to begin another phase of contributions to the city's visual and experience and sense of place.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. As always, you all do an outstanding job, and Tarpon Springs is looking much nicer as far as the murals. And I very much appreciate the way you engage the public and have, I don't want to call them ribbon cuttings, but something similar to that, where it introduces the artwork to the community and everybody that's got an opportunity to come and listen to the background of it and things. That's very important, so thank you. I heard what you were asking for this evening, and what I want to do is ask the Commission if they've got any comments first, and then we'll go to the public, and then we'll circle back to what you had requested. Any Commissioners have questions? Vice Mayor Eisner, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Well, Ms. Jennings, or as I like to call you, Joan, and a good friend, I appreciate always all that you do. I know just how hard you work at this, along with everything else you do. So I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart because I know that your heart and soul is in it, and your whole committee is in it. Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Mr. Graham, and everybody else. They all look great. I love driving around and seeing it. I know we had a couple of hiccups on a couple, but, you know, you work very hard to try to circumvent those hiccups, and I think everything looks really nice. Look forward to seeing more of what you come up with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kulyas.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Jennings, for the presentation. I appreciate the hard work the Public Art Committee has put together. I do want to encourage in a public setting here in the near future for the art boxes to, I've spoken with the historical members of the Historical Society, including Mr. Hoffman, and they're interested in collaborating with the Public Art Committee to create some artwork with the history photographs from the community to have them installed in certain areas of the sponge docks to be able to show what the area looked like 100 years ago, 50 years ago, and in certain parts of the community. So I believe, as well as many others, photography is a form of art. And so it'd be interesting to see that implemented during some part of the exhibition process or for certain months out of the year for the community. So I'd like to throw that in there. And as far as our other, the proposed projects, we'll talk about that in a moment. So, thank you.
Would you be talking about using the existing art boxes or augmenting them with historic photographs?
What I mean is, just like you have to produce the vinyl pictures or, you know, you go about it, whether you need an artist to help digitize them, bring high definition to it, or, you know, create the contrast that's needed to put them in to create that illumination, it's up for the Public Art Committee to decide. I just think it'd be very sharp for a certain portion of the year where you could see the working waterfront and what it looked like 100 years ago or even 50 years ago, and have pictures of the boats lined up. Or in front of the coffee shop, you could see what individuals were doing many years ago sitting in front. And so it's a reflective piece of the community when you have the Greek flags going with the Greek music, as well as the historical perspective. So I just want you guys to consider that and be able to, through artwork and presentation, tell another story of Tarpon Springs and the heritage in it.
Yeah, no, I guess my question was, do you want to leave the existing art boxes intact with the art from local artists and augment them with the historic photographs? In other words, create a second series of art boxes?
Yeah, no, not a second series, just replace them at from time to time.
Yeah, that's what I, well, the thing is, it's, you know, it's not that easy. You know, we usually do them all at a shot with the cooperation of Public Works because the guys have to go up in cherry pickers to remove the sides of the boxes and replace them. So, you know, and to print them is a pretty expensive process also. And would this, you know, would the Historical Society be willing to share the expense with us?
That's some for discussion, but I can't see why not. It'd be such a great opportunity for, to have both organizations collaborate together in a way. I'm hoping that's something that can come up for discussion. It was just breaking the little ice right here to hopefully bring that together.
Well, as you probably know, everything is done in committee, and it will come up before the, you know, the Public Art Committee. But I guess my hesitancy is that lately, there's been, shall we say, an uncomfortable merge between art and history. They are two very different things. And while I agree that photography is indeed an art, historic photography is really pretty straightforward. It doesn't express an artistic point of view or an artistic bent. And as I said, I think it just warrants future discussion.
I just take into consideration, and as a Public Art Committee, it's, I think it's important that you as a whole important that you as a whole try to decide on projects that help reflect Tarpon Springs and tying everything in together, so.
Well, that's what we've been trying to do with the art projects, you know? And, you know, as I said, sometimes we've wandered into an area which is sort of treading into the region of history. And, you know, that becomes very difficult.
I agree, but, you know, we'll talk about that in the future.
Commissioner Kulias, I'm sorry, were you down? Commissioner Kulianis, anything?
I just want to say thank you, Joan. You do, your committee and yourself, you do a wonderful job, and we're lucky to have you.
Thank you.
That's it, thanks.
Commissioner DiDino, anything?
I can only echo that. You were doing a wonderful job, and I know you must get personal satisfaction, all of you, for your hard work, because it shows, it shines. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone in the public would like to make comments? Mr. Stae?
Juliana Day, 413 East Oakwood Street, Tarpon Springs, Florida. Good presentation, Ms. Joan.
Thank you.
I've been attending some of your meetings too. So, one thing about the art boxes, and we talk about art and the renders of art. What is art? That's a question that's open. Even the famous artist would tell you it is what the artist sees. I had actually all about the art boxes, not only just for the sponge dock area, for the total community. And I'm talking about resilience. How we look here and there, community by community, street by street. Art should be all around. I do love the art you put at Dorset Park. Very good. But how is that art going to spread, community by community? Okay? I love the art that you did at the other baseball field on the, what you call a concession stand, a non-working concession stand. But, thank you. And that's my comment. How are you going to spread the art through the vision of the past to the future?
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Morey, are there any remote access comments?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jennings, thank you very much, but we're going to circle back. Ms. Jennings asked for, we need to accept the presentation, is that right, number one?
No, it's a special presentation, Joan.
Okay, what about the consensus on the two projects that Ms. Jennings had asked us for? Dr. Safford, I'm sorry, the two statues that we talked about?
I guess I'll defer to say, I mean, you could discuss them now. I don't know if it, consensus, a vote, or whatever, because this is a presentation.
They were asking for us for approval on the proposed projects, correct?
To move ahead with it is basically what, acknowledge a consensus that we're fine conceptually, I guess, to move ahead.
I mean, I'm gonna, I'm willing to talk about a couple, a couple of the projects.
Then bring it back as another agenda item, or?
No, I'm not, I'm not willing to move forward on approving one of the proposed projects. And I'd like to go into that if needed.
Okay. All right. Ms. Jennings, why don't we do this? Let's put something on the agenda for the next meeting, as far as specifically what, you know, what the artwork is. I know the, the two art, the two statues that you mentioned about. I think all you're looking for is acknowledgement that there's no objection at this point.
That's correct. It's been done in the past.
So, but there seems to be a little bit of, I'd like to get some unanimity out of this, so if we can just bring that back at the next commission meetings.
Would you like me to present, you know, like a proposal to the board?
Why don't we, I don't have an issue with that. I think maybe that would be with Ms. Woods, yourself, and the city manager.
Again, I think, again, when we put this on as a presentation, there wasn't anything indicated that we wanted the board to make a decision on. When there is that, there's usually a separate, there's a separate item on the agenda in special consent, what we do that for.
Oh, okay.
So, so what they're talking about bringing is you asking the same question for direction and moving forward, and that would be a special consent item where they could give you that direction.
Okay.
So that could be done as soon as the next meeting, if you're ready to go with asking the same question.
Yeah, it's very simple.
And getting direction to the board. Obviously, we have a meeting next week, so we'll, we'll put that on the June, we can put it on June 4th meeting.
Right, thank you.
Go ahead.
And I am referring to the Afro Bahamian Sponge Hooker statue. So I think we need to have a healthy discussion on that and, and get it all out there. That way, we can move forward with this.
Yeah, I think they'd be presented as two separate items.
Okay.
Ms. Jennings, just repeat the two, I'm just.
One is the statue of Dr. Mary Jane Safford at the Safford House, and the other is an Afro Bahamian Sponge Hooker statue.
Okay.
Would there, there's not been a location itemized, you know, indicated for that.
And again, what would be brought back is just direction to move forward, the locate, all that, all that accessory stuff would be brought back at a later meeting.
Right.
All you would get from this, this next agenda item at the next meeting would be the direction of moving forward.
Right, that's all. Just, just saying, you know, we could continue exploring it. It's not an approval of the process itself, just an indication that both of these projects bear looking into.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jennings.
Okay.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do is have a motion from the Commission to dispense with our regular rule of going to ordinances and resolutions at 7:30. The two that we have are city business that's not going to, you know, inconvenience anybody that is part of the resident as far as this, and so we can get our public comments done. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
DiDino.
Yes.
Commissioner Kulianis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner.
Yes.
Mayor Vaticios.
Yes, let's go to public comments on anything that's not on the agenda.
Good evening, Board Members. Anita Protozina, 1 Bayshore Drive. I have two questions. Where are we on the project on Bayshore? Are we finding any grants to help with the cost? Are we going to go back to the drawing board to reconstruct the lines and hooking on? Since this became public, you called different plumbers, the cost of connecting has skyrocketed because the mention of $18,000 to $20,000 has brought out. So you can't get a clear, right amount of money that you have to spend. And to put a lien on people's houses, we elected you to protect us. We elected you to do what's right for us. We don't like liens on our houses. And Mr. Mayor Vaticios, you know the Greek families don't like liens on houses. And I'd like to know where we stand. Are we searching for grants to help us, like the other communities have done? Are you looking, going back to the drawing board for a better program of connecting the sewer and to work it on Bayshore? The second thing is, Saturday and yesterday, I rode out to Armun municipal beach. You see trucks with trailers taking up five to six to seven parking lots to park lengthways instead of letting cars with families and people who want to come pull up in these individual parking spaces. We need to do something outside the gates of the beach there where they can park their trucks and trailers, even if we have to hire students to drive golf carts to bring the drivers back and forth. Families were coming out there, but they couldn't park because they had taken all the individual parking spaces. And that's not right to the citizens of Tarpon that do not have boats and trailers. That's very important. You want to buy property, not for a park. Buy property where we can park our boats and trailers for people to use the, one, one of the few boat ramps that we have. We need to start looking for boat ramps and parking facilities in this community. Wake up.
Mr. Lacorius, are we telling people we're going to put liens on their houses?
No, we are not telling people we're putting liens on the houses. We have a website where all the things we are researching is on there and consistent, or everything we're doing on the website. And we will be posting probably tomorrow about the one grant opportunity that we've submitted for. It's being posted, questions are being answered, in a specific place on the project and the thing, and where, what we're doing to bring back in the future to assist the residents there. And it's current and it's updated as information comes in.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Eisner.
Vice Mayor to you, but I'll let that one go. My guys in the 1515 Riverside Drive, I did want to start off the public comments with a positive, but I was circumvented with that, so. In answer, I just wanted to do a little bit of an answering. I did make a call to the police about illegal parking of the trailers around the fruit section. And I later went back and found out there were tickets. So anybody that's got a ticket, you could thank me, because they were parking, and she's correct in that. But it, what she's not correct is that nothing's been done. People have their eyes on it. But I did want to step up here, and I want to thank you all for listening to this, because while everybody was enjoying the hamburgers and hot dogs, celebrating the passing of the memorial, we had Tommy Keiger's people from the sewer department sitting on Riverside Drive in Seabreeze. And it wasn't a pleasant situation. I stopped there to see them. There was a pipe break, it was a sewer pipe break. And while everybody's enjoying their holiday, these people weren't enjoying their holiday. I don't want to tell you what they were sucking out of there. They went to get parts, and I wanted to come up here and thank them, thank Tommy. And I wanted to thank Stephen Schwartz, who's the lead sewer collection tech. I wanted to also thank his worker, Paul Lamandi, and Danny Chason. These guys were just literally covered, and they were working their tails off while everybody was enjoying Memorial Day. So I did want to thank our city manager and everybody else that works so diligently to try to make sure that this city runs smoothly. While we don't know what goes on behind the scenes, we have a lot of good, hardworking people that are trying to make the city better than they found it. So I'd like to see more positivity, and we try to work together to make this better. And I'm on board for that. So thank you to those gentlemen. They gave up their Sunday, and it wasn't a pleasant situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Craig Lund, 743 Chesapeake Drive. Good evening, Mayor and Board. I wanted to clear the air regarding some misconceptions that have been recently expressed concerning my resignation from the City Commission last December. Let me declare, although I think the financial disclosures by Form 6 are onerous for this level of government, and that the state's method of instant publication via the web without a public records request, or even more so, this was not the reason for my resignation. Please understand, I am not retired. I work day to date to earn a living like many of you. I'm self-employed, and while that provides me with a certain latitude as how my time is spent, it still subjects me to certain conditions that affect any small business. And the industry that I'm in is in network security. Term some of you might be more aware of is cybersecurity. The very nature of this business demands confidentiality. And frequently, this requirement of confidentiality is ensured by a form of contract known as a non-disclosure agreement. Some of these types of agreements specify that the names of the parties to the agreement are not to be disclosed under any circumstances. This was the specific reason that I chose to step down as your Commissioner and Vice Mayor. Form 6 requires that you specify the name of your major customers that provide more than 10% of your income, and I could not in good conscience do that. I did not step down, using this as an excuse to abandon the city and my elected responsibilities, as some people have claimed in an effort to disperse my reputation and standing in the community. Hopefully, most of you know me as a fact-based, by-the-rules type of person who's always placed attention to detail and the needs of the city first and foremost to my deliberations. I spent literal months agonizing over my eventual decision to resign. All the while, I was doing my utmost to address the specific concerns I had with the Form 6 requirements. Ultimately, I fell short of being able to conscientiously abide by the new state rules, and by the end of 2023, my only choice at the time was to step down. Since then, I have continued my efforts, and it was only very recently, this month in fact, that I was able to see my way clear to providing the requested information on Form 6 without violating any confidentiality restrictions. One of my concerns has always been that the city moved forward with strong leadership, good management, and fact-based decisions. As a result of this change regarding Form 6 compliance, I also investigated, and in actuality, I just asked a question of the city clerk, would the current charter allow me to run for office in the upcoming 2025 elections? And by the way, the answer was no. However, another result of this was an uproar by one of the currently announced candidates, which included an in-the-face confrontation yesterday, which in no small way was an act of bullying, and included statements as, "How could you even consider that? You quit on the city, left it in turmoil. You used Form 6 as an excuse. You don't have the support you think you do. You're too old," et cetera. That episode went on for several minutes, and I won't detail the more vitriolic statements that were made during it. In my opinion, Tarpon Springs, you need better than a commissioner pulling aside a now private citizen and former commission only to berate and bully them for whatever misguided reasons. Thank you for listening and allowing me to read this into the record.
Thank you. Is there another public comment?
Yes, my name is Glenn Muccio, 745 Bayshore. I'm sure you Commissioners and the mayor, everyone up here is probably fed up with seeing everybody in this room complaining about Bayshore, okay? But none of you sitting at this table here are being hit with $20,000 or $25,000. I've never heard of anything so crazy in my life, and I've lived in this area for 35 years. It's just extremely disappointing, and if it was on your lap, I promise you, you wouldn't be happy about it. Why are we talking about a grant now? The grant should have been thought of way before you started digging holes and putting pipes in the ground and people's streets. I've met all my neighbors, which, first, I mean, it's a nice street, but it's a bad way to meet all your neighbors. I'm not the only one upset. Everybody is distraught over the situation, and to me, it was done, it doesn't look like it was planned to me. How do you spend 1 trillion, 2 trillion, a billion, a million dollars and disregard everyone that lives on the street, hitting them with $20,000 or $25,000? That's what we pay taxes for. I mean, I, is there any other instance of this in Tampa Bay, of people being hit with this much money? That's what I'd like to know. Do you know that answer to that question, or is that?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Are there any other communities in Tampa Bay that have been hit with $20,000 or $25,000 to put a septic to sewer in, on their street? Per resident?
I don't know myself personally, and I'm not sure that anybody else would up here.
Well, that's something you should know. I mean, that's affecting a lot of people in this street. It is keeping people up at night. I know you all sleepwalkers not hit with $20,000 or $25,000 per resident, but that is absolutely ridiculous. We pay taxes, and to be hit with that much in a big surprise in this kind of economy is unconscionable. So, I mean, the grant should have been figured out before you started putting pipes in the ground, not now. You know, we don't like hollow promises. We want results. We deserve results. And, and everybody, you know, at this table, it's just full steam ahead with this pipe program and moving everything to sewer through a two-inch pipe. And people that have been hit with $4,000 grinder systems multiple times. So, so the party don't end with $20,000 or $25,000. It continues with $4,000 grinder pumps into Never Neverland. It also continues with our property values being destroyed because people, you know, realtors are going to tell their customers, hey, they got that nice grinder. realtors are going to tell their customers, hey, they got that nice grinder pump system down your street. You know, that's a knock, you know? No one's happy with this. And before you spend 1.2 million dollars and ask people to spend $20,000 or $25,000 per residence, I think we should have had a, you know, a piece in this, you know, a voice in this. I mean, I think you guys don't remember who elected you, but I can tell you who's going to get you out of office. These people back here are pissed off. I'm pissed off. $25,000? I've never heard of such a thing for a crappy system. It's just disgusting, honestly. I don't know what else to say.
Next person, please.
Hello. Lucian Robinson, 948 Bay Shore. And yes, I'm here to talk about the sewer project. You've made it clear that this is not a concern for the BOC, that it is not policy, you're bailiwick, but administrative and therefore in the city manager's court. There are, though, a couple of policy issues involved. Number one, no effective notice was given to residents. State statute requires advance notice of sewer projects at least a year before completion. That would have been last November 2023. This was conveyed at your last meeting in public comments and more recently formally in writing to the city manager. The staff response is posted on the webpage on this project, and I paraphrase the staff response here. Yes, that's state statute, but the city ordinance hasn't been updated. We'll see what we can do for you guys on the backend in extending the deadline for connection. That response completely misses the point. How nice to hear tonight that we can be in on the ground floor on this DOT project. Sewers, residents, not so lucky. Several of you campaigned on transparency, truth, and building trust with residents. Is it your policy to condone a lack of effective notice to residents? If my neighbors decide to add a room that projects into the allowable setback requirement, I get a postcard, I see ads in the paper, and a big yellow sign goes up on my neighbor's property. Yes, I know this is governed by other rules and regulations, but aren't those rules based on a simple belief that I should know about a nearby action that might affect my property? The sewer project is on my property and in its current design requires my investment and maintenance. In what world do I not deserve notice and a chance to question? Is that the commission's policy? Another point of policy. Is it your intent to shift infrastructure cost to residents going forward? We're used to doing energy doing this. We've been paying for their mistakes and capital investment for years. They at least have the rationale of needing to protect their shareholders. Who are your shareholders if not us? No matter what figures you use, those in the 2022 study or the staff's current much lower figure, a substantial amount of this total project falls to residents. If this is in fact your policy, please know it's counter to the EPA's advice. On page six of the EPA fact sheet posted by staff on the project website, it says, page six, generally, it is in the best interest of the municipality and the homeowners to have the municipality or sewer utility be responsible for maintaining all system components. That includes the components that we are being asked to purchase, install, get building permits for, and maintain in perpetuity. There are more points of advice from the EPA on page four of that same document. Everything I've referred to tonight is material posted by staff to the webpage on the project. Last sentence. If you haven't read each document in its entirety, please do. The conduct of this project affects your credibility and policymaking going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Zonda Snyder, 751 Bay Shore Drive. Yes, we were told that we could have a lien put on. I asked a question. Yeah, we could. That scared me to death. A lot of us are on fixed incomes.
Let me just, let me intervene. We try and maintain decorum, and I don't mind people feeling good about what others say, but I'm really extremely liberal with our rules in terms of residents' behavior. And applauding by our rules is not allowed, but I understand how you feel about this. But yelping and making cat calls and whatever was going on just now, when you raise, this attorney sitting next to me is the easiest going guy in the world, but when you get his attention, that means things are not going well. So I would ask if you all maintain your decorum as you would expect the commission up here to maintain decorum. So please continue.
Okay. This is kind of a domino effect. At least I've had estimates from the plumber and the guy that's going to dispose of my septic system and everything, and then I've got to get a dedicated line to the grinder. Now, my panel box is full, my breaker panel, that's $6,100 more, and the whole total cost is going to be at least $19,000 for me, and I have an 1,100 square foot house. It's just, nothing makes sense. I mean, does this really seem fair? I just can't imagine that it does to you guys. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Matt Orton, 836 Bay Shore Drive. I think, I mean, I would think the main takeaway from this meeting and kind of the heightened level of sensitivity that you see from all the residents here is that there clearly was a lack of communication. I think if this project had been clearly communicated in the way that you think it was, I don't think you'd have as many residents on the street as upset about this process or if they had had a hand in developing this process, I don't think we would be here in the same place. I think, at least to me, what I have lacked in this is seeing any sort of communication in advance, like one of the residents has already brought up, and being able to properly opine on that, you know? I'm at least in a place where whatever I have to put in, I'll put in and do, you know? Eventually, will I possibly move away? Probably, because it's a bad investment. I think my biggest problem with this project isn't the fact that we're putting in a sewer system. I think most residents would agree that we do need a sewer system. There are guidelines saying from Florida that we eventually have to have a sewer system, but I guess the question I have is why are we rushing so quickly when Florida guidelines say it's by 2030, in which all septic systems have to be disposed of as opposed to within 365 days of completion of this project? And why are we putting in an inferior system? If we're going to make an investment as a town and you're going to ask all of the residents to bear a financial burden in putting in these systems, which is the unfortunate result of having to update our sewer and septic systems, we should at least have a say in making sure that what we're putting in is the right type of system. And I think what I question is the way in which this project was determined, the way in which the system was determined to be put in, and also the questionable estimates that have been provided to residents with respect to how they're going to have to make financial decisions to put in the different sort of grinder systems, because I think the estimates that were provided by the town are incredibly low. I think we've had neighbors who have had endless problems, so I just don't think this was clearly thought through, and if it was, we all question whether or not the right decision was made. But again, I think it all comes back to communication. I don't think this project was properly communicated to residents. Residents do not feel as if they have had a say in the way that this project has evolved, and that's a big problem when you're asking people to make very large investments in their homes, especially when they weren't expecting to have to do that. So I think that's why the notice period that has been brought up was so important. And my biggest issue with all of this is just the way in which this has all been carried out, leading to what I would argue is not the best outcome for anyone here. So, you know, it might be too late to reconsider, but I think that's perhaps the best outcome for this, or at least making sure before you start putting pipes actually into the ground that we do have the right system in place and that we've pursued all the right avenues in which to fund this project. Again, the fact that we're looking for grants today as opposed to prior to the start of this project and the prior to determining who's doing this project, again, just speaks to the fact that I don't think any of this was put together properly, and it just gives me a lack of confidence in the way that everything here was carried out. And that's just my opinion, but I think the fact that everyone here feels the same way should at least give you an unsettled feeling with respect to what needs to happen going forward. So I appreciate, hopefully, you're listening to some of this input, and hopefully, we can come to a mutually agreeable solution down the road if you are actually listening to what we have to say. So thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe I should have went first. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, fellow commissioners, senior city staff, Robert Rockline, 755 North Lake Boulevard. I wanted to start out on a positive note and say I thought the Memorial Day ceremony that took place in Craig Park was very, very nice, very fitting, and well deserved to the men and women who have served and do serve. The mayor's comments especially about the future of warfare was very interesting, and I concur with most of that. Last year, I was down in Sarasota with a family, so I wasn't able to attend, and the year before, I believe I was still back and forth, so it was very, very, very nice. And I had to escape quickly because the hot dogs were chasing me, barking at me. I was very disappointed to hear what Craig Lund mentioned earlier. That type of thing in today's world and civil discourse, it's very disappointing. So I feel bad for him. I know he made a lot of contributions to this city and continues to be involved and show up places and offer advice, and he is a listener, and that's, you need more of those people rather than the talkers. What I came to originally say was I wanted to thank publicly Corporal Anthony Boone, who showed up at a neighborhood association meeting at our request and also brought one of the platoon sergeants that work evenings and work in our area of East Tarpon. I used to do many similar type meetings in Manhattan many moons ago to try to bridge the agency and the community and build little trust and understanding. He, like me, tells the people what they need to hear, not just what they want to hear. It's not candy coated. But this builds transparency and trust and confidence and partnership with the agency and the police department. Basically, a lot of times wear their eyes and ears. I know they have drones at events and things like that, but we see more than they do. They're, you know, understaffed, they're covering a lot of ground and wear their eyes and ears in the community. So what we used to do up north, and this, of course, is just putting another slice of baloney on your plate, but we used to have monthly community meetings. Now, this wasn't when I worked decades ago. This was in communities I lived and was involved with after. One month during the day, one month at night. Doesn't have to be monthly, it could be quarterly, just to engage, like we do here, the public with that specific agency and maybe the fire department also and EMS. So just some food for thought to consider going forward. Thank you for all you do.
Chris Heriboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. So we continue to have this communications issue, specifically with the city manager not notifying people about things that are on the agenda that will affect them. It was over 10 years ago, I think, 2014, there was a commissioner sitting up here berating a family in Tarpon Springs. I got up to the podium and said, hey, did anybody notify that family? You're going to be talking about them, that they were going to appear on the agenda? And they said, no, even though the policy and the code stated that people need to be notified. So I got the address and the name of that family, and I went to their house, and I said, hey, did you know that they're talking about you on live TV right now, City Hall? All these years later, the city manager is still not notifying people about issues that will affect them. I don't know how that's even possible now. All this time has passed, I mean, how can it be that it's still a problem? I mean, every time that you guys voted on something that affected this project, they should have been notified. Every single time. How is it that this takes place in the dark and they find out when they're breaking ground on these projects? It's ludicrous. And I know you're going to talk later about hiring a new city manager, but whoever it is, I mean, maybe you just need a communications director, somebody that automatically makes the town notified and not just posting it online. Some people won't have access to that. You got to send them the note. I mean, like I said, this is a small town. Go knock on their door. Let them know what's coming up on the agenda so they can show up at these meetings and have their voices heard well in advance. You don't wait until, you know, if somebody showed up at my house demanding $20,000, I mean, that's, I would explode. So you better let me know if this thing's coming anywhere near my house. But in the future, the whole city needs to know when they're going to be affected by a project, not just me. All these people, 20-some thousand residents need to be notified whenever something is directly affecting them on their street. We can't have this anymore. You know, we, what are you doing, man? I mean, what? I know you're busy, but these people are busy too, and they're having to take time out of their busy schedule to come down here and voice their concerns to you, and it's, is it too late? Are you able to fix it now? I don't know how, but you better find a way, come up with some money to help these people, and you're going to have to put a hold on that project. This is, it's all happening after the fact. You can't keep doing this. And from now on, whether you hire a specialist to just inform people or if you hire a new city manager, make sure they do their job. Just the notification part, just that alone is the key to success in our city. Good communication, that is the key, and it's not difficult. Sending a card, making a phone call, sending a text message, knocking on the door, this can be done. It's not rocket science. So let's not have this happen again. And God help us that you can find a way to fix what is happening now. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Terrapani, 128 East Tarpon Avenue, Tarpon Springs. I'm here to address public comments that were made by candidate Chris Heriboski at the last BOC meeting on May the 7th, 2024. Mr. Heriboski, as a declared candidate, has an obligation to verify his statements as being truthful before making them to the public. Mr. Heriboski, in an attempt to impugn and smear his only opponent in the commission race, declared that former mayor and current commissioner Frank DiDonato had appointed the largest developer in Tarpon Springs to the charter revision committee. This declaration was disingenuous, done solely to negatively impact Commissioner DiDonato. I am honored to have received Commissioner DiDonato's appointment, but I am not the largest developer in Tarpon Springs. but I am not the largest developer in Tarpon Springs. In fact, I'm not a developer on any scale and have never developed anything other than building a mullet smoker in my backyard. Mr. Heriboski declared that he is against development, but is for redevelopment. That is interesting and odd, since my partners and I were the pioneering force behind redevelopment of the historic and architecturally significant buildings in the National Register District downtown, and yet he tries to impugn me with his untruce. Typically, appointments to the Charter Review Committee are made by the BOC to people in the community who have some gravitas and historical knowledge. Commissioner DiDonato and I have known each other professionally for many years, but we are not best friends. I believe that Commissioner DiDonato chose me because of my past contributions and knowledge of the city, including volunteering my time to these organizations. I was a former chairperson of the Charter Review Committee. I was the former chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Board. I was a former chair of the Health Facilities Authority Board in charge of $30 million in hospital bonds. I sat on the Hospital Foundation for nine years. I was a member of the Design and Build Committee for the New Library on Lemon Street. I was a member of the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. I was president of the Main Street Association multiple years. I was the founder of the Tarpon Springs Arts and Crafts Show on the bayou. I served 10 years as a board member of the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation, the only statewide advocacy organization for historic preservation in Florida. I served two years as president of the Florida Trust and received the Carl Weinhardt Award, the highest preservation award given by the Florida Trust. As you can see from this list, I have been actively involved in the city for many years. Frank DiDonato, as an elected official, has always been fair and balanced, willing to listen to both sides of an issue without vilifying or seeking vengeance against those who disagree or take an opposing position from his. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, on the Bay Shore thing, my mother lived on Bay Shore Drive. My brother lives there now. Somebody said it's an administrative thing, not a policy thing? That's a bunch of BS. If you guys can't control your administrator, somebody needs to be looking for a new job. It's either the construction superintendent or the engineer who's doing the design. Nobody does, nobody's doing what you guys are doing to this bunch. And by the way, I sat up there as a former commissioner, and it would have never happened.
Joshua Goldman, 958 Bay Shore Drive. I wanted to thank my neighbors for being so eloquent in their speeches that they made tonight. I wanted to address the city commissioners and particularly the town attorney because there are really three issues that we're going to have to deal with here. And whether they're dealt with at the commission level or at another level is your choice. We've asked to put this on the agenda tonight. As a community, we've come out now twice, three times if you count the impromptu next day meeting that you guys called to quote unquote notify us after the project started. Three issues. One issue is the reliability of this system that is chosen. When the power goes down on Bay Shore Drive or in Pinellas County, when we have only 100 gallons of water, we're effluent. Before it backs up towards our house, I can assure you that there will be buckets of other things entering the bayou on our street because you will be taking our homes away from us effectively when the power is out. So there's not going to be anything good that comes of this system that is not already there with the septics and the sewers. I would move to go to a sewer system if it was the right system and it increased our reliability and our service and our availability to enjoy our house in all conditions. We're expected, Noah's expecting a record year with hurricanes again. And as we know, all it takes is one glancing of a tropical storm to affect our power for weeks. Seabreeze is getting an emergency generator for their lift station. How are you going to put 100 emergency generators on everyone's home here so that they can actually enjoy their house when the power goes out? You're not going to be able to do that with this design. By admission on your own engineering reports, you could have, for a slightly higher amount of money, shift the cost of the grinders to a gravity system and a city-powered lift pump. That wasn't done. So first issue, reliability. Second issue is cost. Every time that these things have been done in communities, we have always looked, I mean, we did a lot of research, everyone here, our whole neighborhood has done a ton of research, and we've found people to do research for us. The cost is paid for with grants and other federal funds as well as taxpayer dollars. That means the allocations that you guys have the choice of making. This is not administrative. This is a committee policy that needs to be held. And the third issue is communication. So please listen, we have reliability, we have cost, and we have communication. There's three issues here. And if you don't listen to us, you're going to have to listen to someone that we bring to the table. I'd prefer not to do that. Thank you.
David DeLu, 944 Bay Shore Drive. Look, I love this city, but I do not like what's going on here. You are about to place a very heavy burden on us and those that live around us. This low-pressure system that we're talking about is a known maintenance nightmare, and you know this. This system will certainly have a negative impact on all of us. And I want to share with you just a couple of these impacts that we're potentially looking at. One is potential health and safety hazard. These systems are known to fail, and when they do or when there's a power outage, like, we can guarantee, these systems can overflow into your yard and they can back up into your house. And you're essentially forced out of your home until it's fixed. Another impact is a potential environmental hazard. And look, with no means of measuring the impact because you're making us responsible to maintain these systems, you won't be monitoring system failures or sewage spills. So how are we going to keep track of this? And you know, the irony of this, this project that you're forcing on us right now, it's being completed pursuant to mandate from what, 20 years ago, which was created to help protect the environment? How is this any better if the city isn't going to manage this? And Commissioner Eichner, I know you attended the meeting with us the evening before the last city commission meeting. And I want to thank you for attending that, and you spoke with my wife and I afterwards briefly. And you informed us that you have a grinder pump. And with your background, I know with your business experience, you're able to maintain your pump. You also informed us that it's you and your wife at your house. And you advised how you learned on how to cut back, on how often you flush your toilets. However, you still had to replace a pump within the first three years, I think you advised. We, we know a family that lived next to you for eight years next door. My daughters, our daughters dance together, still do. They had, in eight years, they had to replace their pump four times, and the last time cost them $4,000. And see, we have children at home, as many families do, and they frequently have friends over, and heaven forbid, a wipe gets flushed. We're, the way I look at it, we're being forced to change our daily living. You know, this affects us at our home. How often we can flush, what we can flush, even the kind of laundry detergent we can use. Even if everything is right, they're still going to break down, indeed replacing. And unlike you, I mean, I might not have your same skill sets, but you know, I won't, most of us won't be able to troubleshoot these pumps. And there's clear direction that the owners should not attempt to try to repair these themselves. I know you need a special tool, right? Just to open the casing and a tool that most plumbers don't even have on them. You know, so looking at that, and of course, as mentioned, the adverse impact of the cost, which is massive. This is significant and unreasonable. And for a town just under 26,000 people, less than 1% of us is going to be placed on this failed system. And I tell you what.
Sir, your time is up. If you could wrap that up with some thoughts.
Okay. Final thought is, what's more concerning is, you know, doing research, Lake Placid, a small town, less than two hours from us. Population of less than 2,500 people. They received $40 million from the DEP in grants for this septic-to-sewer conversion. And right now, they're currently requesting another $5 million. 2,500 people, $40 million. What have we got, what are we doing? I tell you what we're doing. We're soon to have a very inefficient and the least cost-effective for us, at a massive cost to us sewer system.
Sir, could you wrap up your thoughts, please?
To that, I say, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Maggie Miles, 433 East Boyer Street. About a year ago, I came to the commissioners' meeting and was asking about the distant Belcher corridor to be opened or looked at and what we can do. And there was supposed to be a petition generated. That never happened, and it's okay. So, but I would like to know what can be done? Can it be put on a ballot? Because I think we're kind of past like just talking about it. But to let the residents of Tarpon decide whether they would like, that is something they would like to see opened. I heard a discussion earlier about US 19 and all what's going to be going on with that. But I still think that the Belcher-Distant Avenue corridors are much needed north-south corridor for our residents. They're asking, how do we feel about a traffic light at MLK and Distant Avenue? Well, I would be in favor of that if that corridor was open. So what can be done? I know we have some representation on Fort Pinellas now. The discussion, and I'm told it's on the list somewhere buried. But what can we do as residents? Can it be something put on a petition? Or can it be something put on a ballot for the residents to decide if that's something that they want to happen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Taylor, 1991, Douglas Lane, Tarpon Springs. As we know, the mayor position is coming up soon, and there's going to be a lot of voting going on in Tarpon Springs. And it sounds like a lot of people here are here about a communication issue. Well, I'm kind of here about a diversity thing because I've spoken to you all about the need of diversity in Tarpon Springs more. And just tonight, just sitting here before Mayor Commissioner Coolios can even hear any verbiage on the Sponger Project, he downed it right away. That's diversity, Commissioner Coolios. Take a step back and think before you speak loud like that because the mayor position is coming up, and if you're running, you've got a lot of people to deal with, so be very careful in that aspect. And it's asked for you to have an open mind and listen to the whole presentation. On a lighter note, I can't swim. I know we're talking about Dorset Park a lot. People like to have a pool up there. I can't swim. I'm more for the splash park. So I'm going to always come here because when I go up to the park and I run it by the parents and the children that's at the park, they would love to have a splash park. Everybody from a foot high to four foot high, we won't drown. So if we can look into having a splash park put at Dorset Park, you say you would have it in your budget, so hopefully that it'll come to fruition one day. So preferably in the new budget, you can still look at having a splash park put at Dorset Park because as climate control get worse, it's 110 degrees out there. Those kids need water to play in. And it's in other parks, and it's very nice. So I would like for you to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Linda Evans, 963 Bay Shore. I just have one short thing on the website that we get notices from if we sign up for the text. There is a notice that says mandatory connections. And if you read what it says, number three, it says that if you don't connect to this sewer, you are responsible for attorney fees that the city is going to charge to make you hook up, and they can put a lien on your property. It's right there in writing on the website under mandatory. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Elaine Delu, 944 Bay Shore Drive. Just to follow up on that, it's obviously the city manager did not hear about the public workshop and what was said, but it was asked, that same question, what would happen if we don't hook up? And he's sitting right there in the audience. Bob Robertson responded, we will place a lien on your property. So to start out this public comment to say, nobody said anything about a lien, is another misinformation that we kept getting over and over, and that's what's so frustrating. I'm here to speak against the installation of a low-pressure system for Bay Shore Drive. At the last city commission meeting, we heard various reasons why gravity wouldn't work, including the city manager saying, we didn't do this on the cheap. But the next day, we all found out that's exactly what you did. You did it on the cheap. The day after that meeting, we received the Bay Shore Drive Evaluation Report from 2022, showing that North Bay Shore Drive could have had a gravity system installed. It did not provide a price for South Bay Shore because of an existing manhole, but that could have been priced out also if you replaced that manhole. For now, I'm focusing on North Bay Shore. You wrote in that memo trying to justify your decision that the cost was four times as much, putting in a low-pressure system for $500,000 as compared to the gravity system, which would have cost 1.93 million. Even in that same report, it shows that if you included the grinder pump package, it would have been 1.2 million for that system. You have all heard how the residents of Bay Shore Drive found out about this project from a contractor asking where we wanted our grinder pump to go on our property. None of the neighbors knew what he was talking about when he said the project was starting the following week. He came back the next day with city employee Jevren Miller. I asked the contractor in front of Mr. Miller how many of these septic-to-sewer conversions he had done. He replied he had done a ton of work all over Polk, Hillsborough, Pasco, Pinellas. I said, great, how many of these required residents to hook up to a grinder pump station? He replied, none, this will be the first one. I looked at the city employee and responded because cities and counties would not be installing this system when gravity could be installed. I already knew this because of Hillsborough County refusing to install this system. You tried to sugarcoat Hillsborough County's replacement of all their low-pressure sewer systems by saying it was the age of the systems and some of them being 40 years old that really caused maintenance issues. I spoke to the Assistant Director for Hillsborough County in charge of Public Utilities. He verified why the county is replacing them, which is also posted on their website. Low-pressure systems are susceptible to failures and overflows, potentially endangering public health and safety. And low-pressure systems that are near water and sensitive estuaries may pose an immediate threat to water quality and the environment. I asked him directly if there was ever a situation in which they would consider putting in a low-pressure system now. They have over 60,000 septic tanks they're looking to convert. And he responds was, not just no, and I'm going to paraphrase, heck no. I'm proud to be working in a county that's doing the right thing for the residents. I wish I was living in a city that was doing the same. You should have never let this project start when you realized we weren't properly noticed. You should be doing the right thing and stopping this current system from going in and putting in a gravity system. Thank you.
Sir, any other public comments? Mr. Mori, are there any remote access comments?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay. We can do a couple of things, Commissioner. And first of all, let me just say, as far as the policy thing, I've been a strong believer of this separation between administration and policy. And I was city manager, I was in his shoes 25 years ago when some of these people were saying they were in office as well. And I'm a strong believer in that and I wouldn't waver on that. So the only policy issue is, and there is no halt to the project. There is none. You can't stop the project and redesign it because you bid it out under a certain set of specifications. And when you change the specifications, that means that you basically are violating a fundamental rule of purchasing. And so that means that the only option is to cancel the project. Just cancel it. And then that case, the contractor is owed the profit and probably purchased whatever materials that they have already purchased ahead of time in preparation for finishing the project. So the only policy issue is to cancel the project. I know how you feel. I'm not for canceling, I'm speaking to you, I'm not for canceling the project. In terms of money, $800,000 is a lot of money. The gravity system is much more. And there's absolutely no, no reason why this system couldn't be finished and then something else being planned for the future in terms of gravity. And I'm not sure that, I'm not sure how that would work. But I want to do one of two things this evening. We have a rules of procedure where basically we don't have an agenda item on you. So I'd like to ask the commission if they'd like to waive the rules and allow commissioners have the say to address your comments here this evening? Is there anybody that would make a motion to that effect?
I'll motion. I'll motion to waive our rules of procedure to make comments.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Coolianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Coolios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes, Vice Mayor Eisner, would you like to address the-
I would love to. So believe me when I say I've heard every statement I was at the Monday meeting. I've watched the meeting on Tuesday. Just to give you a little bit of a background, I'm very familiar with both systems. I've installed both systems. I've did, just so you have some background into what I'm saying to you. I do also have a background in sewer backup. That's exactly what I did for a living for 30 years. So I appreciate when people come up and they give what I call, what the beauty salon has told them. But there's a lot of misinformation out there. So I don't want to get involved with the procedure that we did. I was not fond of the procedure that we did of not informing you, but that's not under my jurisdiction. The board had the jurisdiction to take X amount of money and apply it to a project. And that's what we did. Up until Monday morning, when we started getting all your, the emails is when I first got involved with the problem. So I want to do some clarifications because there's a lot of things said. I'm sure there's been a number of people in here who have seen me up and down the block in my vehicle and on my bicycle. And why I was up and down the block was to see that there is a curvature that goes up and down and up and down. And if you're familiar with laying pipe, whether it be inside someone's house or outside, every one foot of pipe, you have to have a quarter inch drop for gravity. You would not be able to do that on the street unless at every low point, you would have to put a city pump. Now, I'd love to have a raising, and I'm not asking for this. I'd love to have a raising of hand, which house would like to have that smelly pump in front of their house? We would have to do an eminent domain at this point to force you to have that pump in front of your house. So I'm aware of the fact that if we had an electrical breakdown, you would be without your pump. But many of us, we all live here in Florida, we have hurricanes. We all try to do generators. I tried to empty my pump prior to a, I know there's a planned hurricane. I emptied my 100 gallons, whatever I have, and I tried to flush the toilet as little as possible. I know there was a comment made that I replaced my pump prematurely at three years. That was what the contractor provided for me. I have one in now that's eight years, okay? With no problems. And I do not, I have not opened it up to service it. So I'm not advocating for pumps or against pumps. All I'm saying is, I've had 11 years right now and I'm on my second pump. I have to clarify the comment you made about my neighbor next door. They did have little girls in the house and the little girls have little girlfriends. And if you're not specific in what you throw down, you can have issues. The pump they have is a 220 volt pump. It's, it's a high pressure four horsepower pump and it doesn't matter. It'll clog no matter what you throw down. So I heard somebody make mention about it was going to cost $6,000 to upgrade their electric. Mine runs on a 110. It's, it's a three-quarter pump. You don't need to upgrade your electric to do that. And again, I'm not advocating, I'm trying to just give you facts of what I know, what, why they break down. The other thing is if you do have a rambunctious bunch in your house and they do like to throw things down, I'm sure most of you or by now know, I did some research and there is a next generation pump, which is a V-cutting pump. And it's made by Pentair, the other one's made by Liberty. And these things are guaranteed to eat up anything that you could throw down the pump. My joke was, if you want to throw kids down there, it'll chew them up as well. But I don't want to say that, even though I did. Pampers could be thrown down, cotton mops could be thrown down, things you wouldn't even want to throw down. And it will chew it up and grind it up and get rid of it. So there is a solution if you have a heavy duty system. My other comment that I wish to make is, I know there was comments made about, I can't believe that we're going to put down $25,000 and I don't want to spend this. But I will tell you, I live a half a block off Seabreeze and they're all on a gravity system. And they're getting prices of 10, 15 and 20, $25,000 as well. And sometimes their price is even going to be more than your price because with a gravity system, going back to my original comment, you have to have a quarter of an inch drop every foot. With the, with the gravity system, if it's with the force system, they could lay that pump very easily, not very deep down for a lower cost than it is to do a gravity system. I don't know if any plumber shared that with you. But also bear in mind, you have plumbers walking into a neighborhood, you're all waterfront property, they all see ka-ching. And you have to shop around and try to get somebody. I don't know how much your septic, I don't know where it's located. It's going to be more expensive if it's located behind the house, whether you did a gravity system or not. Now, some of the plumbers that could come up to you and say to you, you may not even be able to do gravity from your house because if it's in the back of your house, do you know how deep you're going to have to dig and wreck your property to make sure that that sewage flows to the street? And then that street has to be as low or lower than all of the other properties in the neighborhood. So if you have six or seven properties in the neighborhood, you have to keep going down. Excuse me. The computer decided to take on its own life. So we would have to, as a city, dig up the street and keep going down, which is what happened on Seabreeze because I watched it happen. So we have to keep going lower and lower and lower until we can get, you know, it has to go by gravity. So by the time it went halfway down the block, we would be digging down and having to build walls around where we're digging because you have water that would be rushing in from the Gulf. All of these problems were problems that you may or may not have been aware of what went on in Seabreeze. And that's what precipitated a really extenuating circumstances that happened to the people there. As disgrunted as you are here, if you speak to some of the people that happened, what happened to them with the timeframe on Seabreeze, they kept running into problems. I heard somebody say the breakdown of the pump. Well, if the city pump breaks down because it's got issues, it's going to break down a lot of people. I'm not saying that the ejector pump is the best system out there. If you had a new development and everybody was at a nice height, it's a new development, it would be great to put in a gravity system. They're fine. But to do it in an existing area is extremely difficult. So when you ask these questions of plumbers, you can't ask just a basic question unless you say, would it apply here better than somewhere else? Is it okay to do it in an existing neighborhood that has curves in it or whatnot? When you have a forced system, as I heard somebody say, there would be backing up into the houses. That's not true, they have check valves on all of them. They have overflow valves on them. So if something should fail, believe it or not, it would overflow. So there would be, and we have a huge sewer vac system, a truck that comes out and would remove the waste. So there's, I would love to have a venue, which I've spoken to the city manager about, where you can ask these questions, get the answers. If you have a very easygoing household, like I do, we have a sign that says just teepee paper, human waste, and we have no problems. If you have a rambunctious like my next door neighbor, I don't want to throw them under the bus. They do have a lot of breakdowns, I see it, but it's all self-induced. So however they live their life, that's their business. How I live, mine is mine. So if you, the one main thing I want you to know is, even if there's a gravity system there, you might find out and ask pricing on what it will cost you to do a gravity system versus the low pressure force system. Because you may find out you're going to have more damage. The street's going to be down longer because they got to dig down deeper. This is minimally evasive to your whereabouts. We're just putting a two-inch pipe down. And I know somebody had said something about a two-inch pipe not being large enough. My whole house is two-inch pipe. All of the drainage goes to the system, is a two-inch pipe. And I've never once had to clean it out. There is no special tools to take it out. It's a half-inch hex screws all the way around. It's a fairly easy pump to replace. You could replace them, they're $300, $400 for the regular grinder pump. If you want to get into more elaborate pump that is more trouble-free, it's more money. I think they run about $1,200 or $1,400. So I hope I answered some of your questions. I'm happy to answer any of your other questions. I don't want to get involved with what the city manager either did or didn't do. That's for him to explain. I'm just trying to give you logistics. And you know, personally being in the sewer backup business, I liked when the pumps in New York broke down and I had the job. Somebody has to do that. But you know, I don't believe that down here, I've had that kind of situation. I've been very successful. I have four or five neighbors that all have those pumps. They've not had any problems with it whatsoever. There is one neighbor that has and there's a good reason for it. And that's all I'd like to share with you. So I'm always available, you could call me. I know some of you have. I'm happy to answer your questions, so.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Coolios?
Sure. For the Bayshore Sewer Project, you know, it, I don't like receiving this criticism, you know? And it's, you guys have a right, you know? From understanding it all as the project starts. And you know, I'm thinking we're doing a good thing for the community, for your part of the neighborhood. And so when I see that, you know, and costs do have to be incurred, I did in fact request an agenda item, but it wasn't to stop the project. It was to simply have another ability which you all can get your frustrations out, your concerns and us potentially talk about grant opportunities, possibly canceling impact fees, which I found out we necessarily can't do. And any other grant opportunity to help you. There was another issue that we talked about briefly with the city manager was about not forcing anybody onto the line within a year. And forcing people on, you know, when your pump breaks, or when your tank breaks or goes bad. That way, I understand it's going to be, it's going to cost you one way, you know, to fix it or remove it. But I definitely want to stress the point that this commission is looking on trying to find ways to save you money. Do I, do I believe, you know, should we've had an option to be able to have the gravitational shown to us or maybe you guys? You know, I believe so, but it did come at a cost. And so I don't, you know, it's a tough situation. But I think the best way we can go about resolving it is us as a city trying to find the most grant opportunities, the most ways to not impact your pockets. And so, you know, I, I feel for you all. I hope that the residents in the South Bayshore area, we really need them to understand that the low pressure system is the only way you can put a system in that lower Bayshore area that the feasibility study said. And so those residents wouldn't have been able to have an option one way or another when this project started. So we will, we need to do a better job of communicating and getting stuff out there. But I think our main goal right now is to get funds for you all. Because I don't see this commission going in a way to stop the project. I mean, you can see how each commissioner goes and what their feelings are on it. And so I just hope it all comes out to the best and the impact to your pockets is as minimal as possible. As far as former elected official, Mr. Craig Lunt, you know, the issue is, it was difficult for him to have a tough conversation.
Point of order, Mayor? Yeah, I agree with that. Let's save that for the staff board comments at the very end.
No, sir, you opened it up for public comments regarding to all of this. The people are here, he made his statements.
But he didn't mention any names, Commissioner Coolios. He did not mention any names.
Once again, you guys are protecting, it's wrong.
I'm not protecting anybody, I'm just telling you that he didn't mention any names. He didn't point anybody out. We're talking about Bayshore Sewer right now. I mean, if-
You opened up public comments for everything.
Mr. Sausman, what would you like to do?
Point, I still called the point of order.
Mr. Sausman is the parliamentarian.
He can't call point of order.
I'm not calling point of order. The only thing I would say is that you all voted to put an issue on that you're discussing right now. And that's the issue that's still before you.
The Bayshore Drive.
Yes.
So it wasn't just public comments in general?
That was not my understanding.
Okay, so Mr. Lunt, just wait for Commissioner comments at the end of the meeting and they will be addressed professionally and efficiently. Thank you. But the real victims are the citizens of Tarpon Springs.
Thank you, Commissioner Coolios. Commissioner Coolianis?
We had talked at the last meeting about possibly looking at an option of opting out of the project, of opting out of connecting. Yeah, I've been, I was talking with the city manager about what those options could be. One of the issues is getting grant money, asking for grant money without a mandate is difficult, correct?
Could be.
Could be. So let me ask you, city manager, what would be the longest period we could extend connectivity on this project?
So in the items that are on, on the website that's posted, there's a series of things-
there's a series of things that we're gonna look at. When we look at them, for instance, the time to hook up, grant availability, other options. There's several options, about four or five listed there, but we're also looking at other ones. We're gonna bring, after we do the research, we're gonna bring them back to you. They'll be an agenda item because we're dealing with policy issues on time to hook up, where there's some legal things we need to look at. They keep talking. Again, one of the problems is we put information up there and the information gets twisted when it brought it back. The notification to the people is one year to hook up, not to do the project, to hook up. That hasn't been given to them, so we're talking about, you know, people talking about liens or anything. We haven't even given the notice to even start the timeframe. And then there's the question of is the state law one year? City ordinance, one year? Does that give them two years? Where do we go? Those are all the things that was listed from the beginning for us to research, get the information on, and then to bring it back to the board, because that's gonna involve all the policy decision that you do. The part that I'm in, right now, we're trying to answer all the questions we're getting. I'm still waiting for questions. I've heard some of them tonight so we can answer, but I'm still waiting for, we're in the stage of answering questions about the project, because the project's going on, the project's not gonna be stopped. It's gonna be in the ground, but that's just putting infrastructure in the ground. Where we go after is put in the ground is where we are researching the options, and we will bring that back to you because those are policy decisions on what you do. Again, in the meantime, you saw in the memo I said I've asked, you know, the board's okay if we do have some more informational questions on my area and stuff. I've asked if Commissioner Eisner could be involved with me because of his knowledge. He's already relayed some of that tonight that he knows to do. We're willing to keep answering the questions, but, you know, that's not gonna get to the point where they want, where a lot of them to stop the project. But again, there's a list of things, including what you said, that we're researching on to give you all the information so that you can make the policy decision of what we can do relating to time, relating to grants, relating to other options. One situation of there's a septic tank put in that's the new brand that meets standards, if that's allowable as an alternative to this. There's all those that we have to do research on and bring back to you. That is an item that's coming, that is an item that you can hear, and then you will decide as a policy forum what you want to do about the people to hook up. What we're trying to do is get this system done so the people will have to hook up, have no alternative to do that they can hook up, that they've been waiting for for many years and stuff. But that's just putting the infrastructure in the ground. We'll be coming back for all those things you're asking for, Commissioner Cullius is asking for, that couple ideas he gave otherwise, we gotta research. So there's more than just the four or five things we've said. We're gonna look at every option that you can decide in policy what you can do for the residents in this situation.
So I think that was pretty clear. We have, it's gonna be, it could be as high as two years, possibly even more, if by the time we extend, by the time this project's completed, the state notification and the city notification. So this could extend out that long. We have to wait on any ordinance changes. We shouldn't be proposing any ordinance changes right now because we need to go look for money. And so I think we're just, that's where we're at, so.
All right. Commissioner DiDonato.
Yeah, I've talked to the city manager a couple times and to Mr. Robertson. They are indeed looking at grant funding now, and there are some out there, absolutely. I talked to the city manager about an idea of maybe getting a contractor plumber to do hookups for that situation that would be much more reasonable. I don't know how long that process is gonna take, but I believe it's been done in the past. I think everybody up here is uncomfortable. We hear you. I'm certainly uncomfortable with it. And I didn't have any vote to say on this project at all. But for the sake of the environment, to each of you's credit, you've come up here, you recognize the need for the sewer. Now, I'm gonna do everything I can up here to find a way to make it more palatable and less expensive, and that's what we're gonna try to do. We've got a timeline. We need to work it. And I can assure you that I will not let up. We will continue to put pressure because we feel you're uncomfortable on this. I too wouldn't be comfortable with it. But the quagmire here is that we all know it needs to happen. So we're gonna try to make it a much better situation for you and therefore the environment. But no one's comfortable with this, so you know.
The last thing, that was the one thing, was to open it up in the rules of procedure. Last thing as I want to make it so the residents get a clear picture. Is there any interest in canceling the project? Is there a motion to cancel the project from anybody?
If we've got the time, I don't know why we wouldn't collect more facts before we just... I mean, I want to know the disadvantages, the risk, and all of those things before we make a decision.
The reason I'm mentioning this is because the residents, the only option that there is is to cancel the project. Just from a strictly purchasing, there is no halting. The project, I think, is about twelve hundred dollars a day just to try and decide what we're doing. You can't redesign the project within a contract that's already been let. We could get sued by the people that competitively bid this project because we've changed after it was bid under a certain set of specifications. And so the only option is to stop, to cancel the contract. And I just want to make it, I don't want to say clear, but just to demonstrate to the residents that, you know, that we hear about halting the project, but I just don't want to mislead you to think that there's some chance that there's, that the project's gonna be canceled. And I just don't know whether any of the commissioners have an interest in canceling the project. I've already gone on record and saying I'm not. I don't have any interest, so. And I don't ask you to make a statement. I'm just asking whether there's a motion to cancel the project from anybody.
Not without more information. We need to, you know, I need to know what the implications are.
Okay. That's all. The way it works under our rules is that if we, you know, there'd have to be a motion or a second, then there would be a vote. There is no interest in stopping the project. I hope that's clear for everybody here. So our public comments are done on that. Our public comments are done. You can send an email in and we'll be happy to answer the question on that. So, okay. I'm gonna take a ten-minute break. So let's recess at nine oh two and reconvene at nine twelve.
Everyone return to their seats, please. May I have the commissioners return to their seats?
We're starting up. We're starting the meeting.
It's already 9:15. We've got Franks over there. All right. Do we have everybody back? Yes. All right. Meeting is reconvened at 9:15 p.m. Okay, let's continue. That was the public comments. We got out of the way. Consent agenda is next. Does any commissioner wish to pull any of the items that are listed? If not, we have item three, special events. A, City of Tarpon Springs, Fourth of July Independence Day Celebration and Fireworks. Item B, Fourth of July Picnic, Craig Park. Item four, Attorney's Fees, Person Cohen Mooney Fernandez and Jackson, invoice 5056. For B, Eunice Salzman Jensen, invoice 81704. Item four C, Eunice Salzman Jensen, invoice 81705. Item four D, Johnson Jackson, P L L C, invoice 12827. Item five is authorize city manager to sign settlement documents to participate in class action settlements for aqueous film forming foams product liability litigation. Item six is to extend file number 230160-C-AS odor and corrosion control. Item seven is award file number 25001, mental health resources. Are there any public comments on any of these items? Okay, if not, may I have a motion to approve items three through seven?
Sooner.
Second.
If there's no commission comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Next is special consent agenda, item eight, statewide mutual aid agreement for the fire department, city manager, of course.
Yes, all of our fire chiefs, Scott Young, come up and talk about this agreement.
Good evening, Scott Young, fire chief. We bring before you the new statewide mutual aid agreement from the State Department of Emergency Management. This is an agreement that the city signs every five years. Last time we signed it was in 2018. They brought for us to have it signed again. The only change to it really is they're going to require now just an automatic renewal every year unless there's other changes that need to come up that we want. But this goes to all the municipalities in the state to sign. What this agreement does is allows us to go help other communities in the event they have a disaster, and it allows us to get reimbursement from the state or if we bring them into our city, if we get hit by a hurricane or a natural disaster of some sort, that they can get reimbursed for their work for us. So with that, I'll answer any questions I can.
Are there any other public comments on this? Are there public comments on this particular item? Mr. Maury, are there any remote access comments?
We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Commissioner, questions, comments from anyone? If there's, do you have something more to say?
I just want to mention one thing before you all vote. We also have the, I want to make sure everybody remembers that we have the Penales County and Tarpon Springs Expo for Hurricane Preparedness this Saturday from 10 to 1 at the Public Safety Building. I just want to throw that.
Is that going to be in the Big Bay?
It'll be in the Bay, plus we're blocking the front street on Huey Off right there, and there'll be some presentations from some special guests.
The road will be blocked off in front of the station?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
10 to 1. Saturday, yes, ma'am.
Okay. If there's no questions, may I have a motion and a second to approve?
Sooner.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Item nine, ratify the selection of Tierra Incorporated and A R E H N A Engineering for request for qualifications for geotechnical and construction testing consultant services.
Bob Robertson will give that presentation?
Thank you, yes. Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. For this item, we're asking the board to award continuing services contracts to Arena Engineering and Tierra Incorporated. These two firms were selected through a competitive process to provide services related to geotechnical engineering such as soils and materials testing, mapping, subsurface condition evaluations, sinkhole evaluations, and sinkhole remediation. The need for services like these can be variable or intermittent. Procurement's backup memo mentions the last two years of spending in the prior five-year contract for the same services was only $42,500. But while that's true, it's important to note, and we should have included in our backup, that the previous three years of spending before that was $320,000 with a peak year of $143,000. The reason I mention that is because we're asking the B O C to authorize and set the annual spending limit right near that number at $150,000 maximum per year. This is the same spending limit that we requested and was approved for the previous five-year contract term for the same services. That concludes my staff report.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this particular item for geotechnical services and construction service testing? Mr. Maury, are there any remote access comments?
We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Commission comments, questions? Vice Mayor Eisner?
Thank you, mayor. I had the conversation earlier in the day with Mr. Robertson. I just felt it was too much. The last two years, we had $42,000, which meant about $21,000 per year. It's a five-year contract, I think, giving, it's too much leeway to do $150,000 per year. Totals up to about $750,000. I would prefer to authorize something a lot lower, and then as need be, we can authorize more money as we seem, you know, to need. I've never come from the school of thumb, and I've spoken to the city manager about this, and I spoke to Mr. Robinson. I don't like handing a checkbook and say, write your own number. I like to be able to make the decision as it goes along. And then he shared with me that there was a couple of years that was, remind me of the numbers, was it 130?
130 and 143.
Right. But it's still, it's not $150,000. I know the numbers are going up, but I'm hoping that things have stabilized and they would be going down, so I don't want to jump in and prepare to go to 150. When you do that, usually you spend what you get, and I prefer to be, us to be the watchkeeper over the city's pocketbook period. So I just think it's too much.
Okay. Just, can I get some? Janita's not here, right?
No.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, just for follow-up with what Vice Mayor Eisner's saying, this item was competitively bid, right?
Not bid, but it was competitive process. It was a C C N A type process, so qualifications-based.
Okay, but, and that was, so the response that we got back was not for, we didn't say, okay, we're going to, we want a response for $150,000. Was it an hourly rate that we asked for?
That's correct.
And then the $150,000 is the staff's amount that they've come up with?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
I still don't want that, yeah.
Again, it's a philosophical thing, and I understand that viewpoint. Our viewpoint was, we're not going to spend it frivolously.
I know, it's a level of service contract.
So again, I believe if there's a number lower that the board is more comfortable with, the only thing it would do to us if we had one of those years, we'd just have to bring in the agenda item and you would extend it. You would extend the amount. So if there's a lower, lower number that the board could do, that would not hurt the bid, that would not hurt anything with it, except we would have to come back, which, again, is not really a problem that I'd have, I have a problem with.
Best way to do this is Vice Mayor Eisner, make a motion with an amount attached to it, and see if we get a second and go move forward with that. Let me hear from the other commissioners.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, is there anybody else? Okay. Vice Mayor Eisner, it's back to you again.
Yes, thank you. I just didn't come up with a number. What I would look to do is do a motion to do $75,000 a year, so whatever that comes to, and this way they have some leeway, because you've had two years of $21,000, correct? And that would give you some overage if you had a year of $140,000, and after that, it could come back, so.
How many, what year contract is this? Three-year?
Five-year.
Five-year, okay.
The five-year to me is just too far out.
So we want to start out with 75 a year?
75 a year, yes.
Is that?
That's acceptable to me.
Mr. Robertson, okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, if there's any comments on that, any questions?
I just think you're cutting their billing down in half. I mean, it's a 50% reduction in some of the services that they're going to be looking to explore, you know. I'd be willing to go with $120,000 or between $100,000 and $120,000 just to save the costs. It's something you want to do, but, I mean, it's a big drastic change, so I'm not going to support it. Staff is asking for it for a reason. Thank you.
It's a level of service contract, unless there's a job that can be charged to it, it doesn't get charged, and that $75,000 gets rolled over to the next year? Is that the way that works? No, it just goes away for that?
It just doesn't get spent.
Okay. All right, so any other comments?
I'd like to rebut that.
Let me give Commissioner Kuliannis first.
City manager, can we, can we live with the 75 to start with and then come back?
Yes, I can.
You can live with that?
Yes.
Okay, now I'm fine.
So, nobody's cutting down, as what was said, about reducing it from 150 to 75. What it is, is a reduction of giving you the flexibility that if you do have something come up, you can always readdress it on a next agenda item and we can get it done. I'm not restricting you from the 150. I wouldn't restrict you from $200,000 if you gave me a project that justifies the means. If I have to go back to remind the board that we had a proposal for Gates that was some astronomical amount of $1 million to $2 million, I asked how many projects, what was the last project we had? It was $10,000. What is the projects we have going forward? There was zero, and I was like, well, how did you justify $2 million? Well, that's, and I remember it was Jacob Carr who made the comment, oh, we do that, we just blanket, you know, and they just decide. That's handing somebody a checkbook and saying, write whatever you want. And I don't mean that in a negative way, because I think Bob Robertson's very responsible, but I do think that our job as commissioners is to be here and oversee every decision that is over $25,000, and this is over $25,000.
The city manager signed off on it, so, I mean, he's okay with it.
Yeah, because when, I'm not restricting it, like we said.
I understand, I understand.
All I'm saying is, it should come back to us with a reason, that's all.
Can we call the question?
That's, all I wanted to do is get to the vote. That's the fancy way of saying it. So, roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next one is number 10, updating direction on city attorney, Mr. Salzman. Or is it the city manager?
I'll defer to Mr. Salzman.
Well, as the, I think as the board's aware, we had brought in an attorney to replace Ms. Kardashian that had been in a big firm. Unfortunately, because of such a big firm, they have conflicts, and so they cannot do it. They made a recommendation to a firm that's handling St. Pete Beach, who also, they have a presence here, and then they have a presence down in Fort Myers Naples area. They have shown an interest, and what we would like to do is have them speak with each one of the commissioners to see if you have any interest. And so we will set that up as we did last time. What I would tell you about this firm, which is good, is they have a lot of the same expertise that Regina had, and the one attorney who's the senior partner was a planner, so he has a lot of that understanding and is interested in those areas where we really could use expertise. So if it's okay with the board, we will do that, and then we will feel, we'll find out what the board wants to do.
Yeah, and our goal is, as you know, enclosed in the backup is Mr. Lewis', you know, his 30-day notice and stuff. He did extend it, because I imagine this coming back to the meeting of the 18th. If the board, just like we did with the previous attorney, if the board is real comfortable with this firm, and again, I think this firm's agreed, here's a situation, to take over that contract.
They're willing for the same price, same as, you know, everything is the same.
Again, we're finishing out our three with someone taking over, so what we do is do the same process. I'm comfortable, I know of their dealings with St. Pete Beach, so it's a firm, I'm comfortable with them, but you have to be comfortable with them because you're a state attorney. If it's the same thing and you speak and you're comfortable with it, the anticipation is the last meeting of Mr. Lewis would be also the one to give the, to have this firm continue the contract out for the three years. So we're gearing for these conversations with you and to go forward to have it on the meeting of June 18th.
And they do not have a conflict with your normal meeting nights? So their meetings are on the opposite? So we already talked about that, that's not.
Okay, let me, let me go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this? Mr. Maury, are there any remote access comments?
We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, what does the commission want to do? I just, I know last time, one of you or two of you wanted to talk to the attorney or whatever, and that's what I'm asking for. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Eisner.
So, Mr. Salzman, this is, I had a conversation with Colleen. This is, Colleen is not in this anymore?
They, unfortunately, you know, they have 100 attorneys in that firm.
Right.
And one of them is representing someone in a potential annexation dealing with the city, and so they have a conflict. They can't waive that conflict.
Okay.
We actually went further into that, looked, talked to the commission on ethics to make sure whether or not there could be a way to carve that out, and they said no. So she bowed out.
So the other question that I have for you before we discuss going forward, we made a change in our days to accommodate Regina and yourself. Is there a possibility of us having to make that change back again?
No, one of the first things we asked them is, can they meet your current meeting nights? And the answer is yes.
No, no, to make it where you come back to the board to be.
Right, no, 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 they can make your current meeting nights.
Okay. I just was trying to see if all of the avenues were.
I'll be honest with you, I think that based on the number of meetings, and I've been covering a lot of Regina's, it kind of makes sense to have somebody doing just your meetings, and then we kind of work out the other meetings. I mean, you have, you have a lot going on. We're doing charter review now, so there's a lot of, and there's a lot of things that are going on, so it would be nice to be able to divvy that up. I think that works out well, and I'm, I believe that you'll be comfortable with this firm and that you'll have that kind of trust that you've had with me and Regina on handling this for you.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, let me hear from some of the other commissioners. You're okay? Is there any additional action that needs to be done, or we just go ahead and prepare a contract and bring that forward?
And we'll have, Trish will be working with their representative from the attorney's office, set up either a Zoom. office, set up either a Zoom or a phone call meeting with each of you in the, in the time.
If the commissioner requests to do that. It's not mandatory, but if you want to do that, you can do that.
I would, I would actually recommend it. I want, I mean, because of the nature of conversations that you have, that you're comfortable with the people, I'd like you to talk to them beforehand.
I think that worked real well the last time we did with Colleen, so yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I just think it's better.
It's, it's Robert, the, the attorney's name, is, is it Robert?
No, it's Andrew Dickman.
Andrew.
And Matthew McConnell.
Okay. Do we need to have any kind of action on this?
Just to move, to move forward with, with what we.
It's just direction from the board. We have it.
Motion to move forward as described by Mr. Salzman and the city manager.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. A roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Colianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. No, thank you. Next item is the updating direction on city manager process. We're gonna go to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead. As they're walking up, I'll go ahead and, and start off. Our direction was to have at the cutoff date of the first round of looking at the applications, which was May twenty-fourth, we were to come back to the next meeting and give you an assessment of the number of candidates, what we were looking at, what process was done. And I can say, the team that has taken these applications, screened them, separated of, of two, two people, Jane and Paul, really, I have high expectations of people, but these two exceeded my expectations of, of the information they have for you and stuff. What we're here tonight for is the next step is deciding on the number of people and how we want to go about going about the detailed background check. Obviously, now we're going into a cost. I don't know. They'll tell you if we have that cost or not, but, but what we would like to each individual, we'd like to ask for each individual one to meet with the team, see what they've put together, how they divided out these candidates. I think it's very manageable if you want to take that approach. And we'd like to ask tonight to each of you to sit down, see their approach and stuff. They'll have candidates that are obvious, that are obvious to move forward to the background and to spend the money for the background phase on. They want to hear from each of you if you have others on the list that you've looked at and you would like to move forward to that. I think that'll be best done in an individual meeting to go over all they've done because it's gonna be a little bit of time as detailed as the process that they have done for you to do. And then, of course, you have to decide what the rest of the process is. But, but where we're at the stage now is, is the applicants that go to the full background, because you have to have that before we even go on of who we're gonna talk to, that you have to have that process. So it's a talking about that and, and what you want to do and, and our suggestions of meeting and getting to that list. If you want to go ahead, just go a little bit of outline what you did, just a short version and we'll hear what the board has to say. I think I, I think I stole most of your thunder, but.
You sure did. Good evening, Paul Smith, Senior Administrator. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be in front of you again here at the podium. I'm glad I remembered how to get to come down here. I wanted to say, yeah, we've took a, a real close look at this and I want to call it a screening process. We're not calling it a ranking because really that'll be up to you all to decide. This is more just a way to say, okay, what number of this group do you want to move forward with further evaluation and which of these criterion are important to you in terms of weighting these different applications? So we'd like to hear from you. And as the city manager suggested, individually would probably be the most efficient way to do that. Some of these criteria are based on the job description and others are based on thoughts you've expressed in terms of what's important to you for the city manager position. So we look forward to talking to you about that.
I think we just want to hear the thoughts of, of the board on the next step of the process.
Let me go to public comments first. And public comments on any of this process for search, city manager search? Mr. Maury, are there any remote access comments?
We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. For myself, I've had a conversation with Mr. Smith and, and I've looked at all, I think thirty-eight applications. And then we got one in over the weekend. Is that right?
We're up to forty-two now.
Forty-two, okay. And some of them hit the marks on all the matrices. And I, I think Mr. Smith and Ms. Niffen have got a good idea of how to move forward with this. And the one question I, and maybe I missed it, were you going to shortlist it to some specific number? Were y'all gonna recommend that this evening?
Well, we would like to start with a suggestion of somewhere in that eight candidate range. And of course, that could get bigger or smaller depending on the thoughts of the commission.
All right.
We, we do want to be aware of the more people you include in that, the more cumbersome the process will become and expensive in terms of background checking and that sort of thing.
And, and so the way, maybe just correct me, the idea that I have in mind is that the staff would put forward the eight names. Each commissioner has all forty-two. If you see somebody else that you think ought to be on the list, then you can have that conversation with Mr. Smith, Ms. Niffen. Else we just focus on the eight that they come up with. I, I know in talking to Mr. Smith today, they've already gone through a lot of extra work to try and identify issues and, and I, I've, I've got a lot of confidence in that. So is there, that's me now. Is there any commissioner would like to say anything else?
Sure. I, I would set up a meeting with them to speak with them as soon as tomorrow or, or this week. I have about seven or eight where I kept it at. And so I would look at those three that are left over, possibly remove a couple and try to look at their system. And I'm ready to move forward, but I gotta understand where this commission's at. The goal is to still, you know, keep this person as a, an assistant transition period where Mark's still around, you know, and for that time as stated in, in the agreement and hopefully get some training as soon as possible underway. So I'd like to see where the rest of the commission's at with, with that issue.
Okay. On that note, as far as a timeframe for this next phase, do you have any suggestions on that, Ms. Niffen?
What we'd like to do is do the, the deep dive on the candidates that we, you have selected. And when I say deep dive, I mean a deep dive. In other words, they check social media.
Well, I think that's on the, on the back, on this.
It's on the backend.
As fat, we're, we're, they're ready for meetings to start tomorrow. So as soon as we get the five of you and get that done, it can go, for the final list to bring back to you, this is the final list to approve, if it come at the, at the, at the next available meeting. And then the background, we're not sure how long that background is gonna, we'll have to get from the firm.
Let me, let me go back. So on these, we're gonna meet with you first before you come up with your list? Is that correct? Are you gonna have your list first?
It's my understanding that we'll give you our list and you can add and subtract as you see fit.
And then each commissioner would meet with you on your.
Eventually, yes.
And then, that's my understanding, right?
And then the final list we'd bring back for your approval.
Okay. And that's based on what you hear from the commissioners? Okay. If you, if, if one commissioner, which means me too, comes up with some wacky person that, you know, maybe that's something we need to discuss about a little further. But I, I've seen some very solid candidates there. Okay. All right. That sounds fair.
Uh, Mayor, are we all able to set up meetings with Ms. Niffen and, and Mr. Smith relatively soon? That way we could have a, a list down to the, the next meeting?
Right.
I'll be able to tomorrow, but I don't know if the rest of the board will. And so just trying to get that list finalized for maybe the next BOC meeting?
It would be with, Trish would set up the meetings for the commissioners with Paul and, and.
Either directly, you can directly, e- either way, Trish or directly with Paul.
Is that what you're asking?
Sure.
I mean, I'm, I'm. Yeah, the idea is that each commissioner meets with Mr. Smith and Ms. Niffen before the next meeting. So that, plenty of time before the next meeting. So we've got, although the next meeting is next Tuesday.
Oh, we got that back to back one.
Back to.
Yeah. We're gonna be able to do that next meeting or?
Possibly. I mean, we just, just wouldn't be able to get that back. We wouldn't be able to get maybe the backup to you to till right up on the meeting and stuff. But e- either that one or the eighteenth at the outside.
We've only got, today's Tuesday. The backup would be due Thursday, which means that all of us would have to be meeting with them before Thursday if you wanted the backup as part of the regular.
You could give up your charter commission meeting tomorrow at two o'clock if you'd like, just the humor. And then this way we could get it.
Let's meet between now and Friday, each commissioner, and then you can provide whatever you need to on, on hopefully Monday, but if not, the, the meeting and, and then we can go from there. Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay. May I have a motion to that effect, if you will, in a second?
I didn't get what we decided because you were speaking that way. What, what was the motion on?
Did you run a call?
Well, I, I didn't get a chance. I just, you know, I don't think that I'm ready to go and meet with them before this coming Tuesday.
That's what we decided to.
Right.
Okay, I'm. So we need, but we need a, a motion?
Yeah. What he's saying, I think he doesn't think he has enough time to look at everybody, look at all the candidates and meet before next Tuesday's meeting.
Correct.
I looked at it, yeah.
I've already looked at it.
I've already looked at them too.
I'm pleased for you. You didn't have company all week.
When, when are you gonna give us the list of eight? Tomorrow?
Yes, we're, we're prepared to do that.
Again, they're ready to meet as soon as tomorrow with.
No, I know. But I mean, Commissioner Eisner doesn't even know who the eight are. I don't know who the eight are, but if we get them tomorrow, would you be able to look through them?
I've, I've, I've looked through all thirty-eight meaning, meaningly, just, just to look through. But I, I don't know how you've got it, but I'm like looking at a little screen about this big. So I just got this today. As city manager knows, I've had company all week and I didn't even know I had this thing. So for me to just make an educated guess on something for Tuesday, I think it's a little bit much.
So you don't want to do it Tuesday? You want to do it?
I do not. Personally, if you remember back, I wanted this all to go to a outside headhunter. I appreciate what they're doing, but you know, this is why I didn't want this. But.
The next meeting is June eighteenth. That's three weeks. Is that a, is that a problem? I think we're honestly, we're.
I mean, I mean, listen, I, you and I both have the committee meeting tomorrow. I'm on other boards, you know, for me to just, you know, stop what I'm doing to just read through thirty-eight, I'm, I'm glad you read through them. I'm glad Commissioner Kulya's read through it. I didn't, I just.
It was on the agenda, sir.
When I start working for you and you write me my check, I will listen to what you have to say.
So let's, let's finish this up. Commission, when would we come back on this? You've got your light on. Did you want to talk about that part of it?
Can Mr. Eisner work on the weekend and, and look at these applications or?
I clearly stated that I want it to be the following meeting. If you don't want to do that, that's your call. I say we could wait a week.
Okay. So do we go through this on June fourth or do we go through this on June eighteenth?
You know, I, I have to make a point here. This is the same person who can stood over here and said, this is the most important thing in that we're gonna do in the city and I'm not gonna be rushed into it and, and, and just carried on. And now it's between now and three, four days.
It's, it, this is. Mr. Salzman weighs in.
It's just, it annoys me.
Well. I know life's a challenge sometimes, but.
We're trying to move away from.
Trying to figure out June fourth or June eighteenth. I'm comfortable with June fourth.
I think.
Would it, would, would it be possible to meet the, the next Tuesday in a work session? Or, or is it a special session? You've got, you've got the special, we've got the public hearing on the budget that next Tuesday, the eleventh. Oh, that's right. Okay. You've already got the public hearing on the budget.
Do we need a motion?
I'll be ready.
I'm doing a motion to the eighteenth, second.
Okay, that's a good way to.
I'd like to have a discussion. It, it's time to move over the essence. This has been going on for, we all know how long this has been going on. We had the list of applicants. They put in a lot of time to put this together. And so let's get this ball moving. I'm gonna be meeting with them tomorrow. And I would encourage the rest of this board to try to meet as soon as possible. But we've had this now since Thursday. So, thank you.
So we have a motion for June eighteenth. If there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I can be ready by the fourth or the eighteenth. So I guess, in the height of trying to agree to move forward, I'll say yes.
Commissioner Colianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
No.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
I'd prefer sooner, but I just want to get a date on here. Yes, just June eighteenth and Mr. Smith, Ms. Niffen, I know there's more work that y'all can do on these people that, instead of waiting for just us to, and then it may disqualify some of these other individuals. Maybe you've gone as far as you can, but it would be helpful if you just continue working. And, and what I want to do is, I, I don't want to discourage any commissioner from meeting with you as soon as possible. Commissioner Kulya, go ahead and meet with them as soon as you'd like. I'm gonna go ahead and meet with them and, and see if there's something that we need to have. And, and so as, as soon as you can, meet with them. So.
And they do have more informational work to do and they still have to put together the firm. And we may be bringing back, you know, we'll, we'll try to make sure if we've got to do something on a choice of, of who does the background and stuff, that we'll have that there. So there's no delay. With the eighteenth, we should be able to hopefully bring back to you the choices, the options on the, the, who's gonna do the background. We'll prove that at the same time. So we can knock them off and not waste it, not, not take any more time to, to go to the next meeting. So we'll try to have that all figured and done. So we can finalize it and get it to the firm we choose on the eighteenth.
Okay. And let me just say, I know this so far has been a challenging meeting with a lot going on with residents and stuff. So if we can just kind of be patient and, and bear with us so we can get this thing done. The next one ought to be easy. Ms. Vincent's gonna be up here talking. So I think we've got, we voted, right?
Yes.
Okay. I think we're done with that one. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
The next item is item twelve, application twenty-three, one thirty-seven and twenty-four, zero, two. This is the fire station on Gulf Road. There's three items on this. One is ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-nine. The other one is ordinance twenty, which is the rezoning. The other one is the B, which is the ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-eight, future land use amendment. That's the second reading. And then item twelve C, which is the resolution twenty-twenty-four dash thirteen, which is a site plan approval. Before we get started, Ms. Vincent, the ordinance twenty-twenty-three, the rezoning, is this the first?
Second.
Second.
The second reading.
Okay. So let's go ahead and, and key off on that one. The way we do it, there's three items.
Mayor?
All three, two of them are quasi judicial.
Mayor, I have a, I have to, I have a conflict of interest recently since that, that time of the site plan approvals, the restaurant owner has become a client of mine.
Okay.
And so I will recuse myself from the vote. But from understanding from Mr. Salzman, our city attorney, I am allowed to engage in the discussion.
That is correct.
Okay.
So I just wanted to get that out there.
Okay. So let me, let me, what we're gonna do is we've got, it's a quasi judicial on two out of the three. What we're gonna start with is to go ahead and do the quasi judicial process on all three, but just keying in off the ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-nine, the rezoning. And then once we complete that, that quasi judicial process will also count for the twelve C, which would be the site plan approval part of it. Is that?
That's a little problematic. I would rather do twenty, because the first two are just second readings. They're gonna be very quick.
You want to do the rezoning?
I need to do a little bit of a presentation on the, on the fire station itself. So I don't ha, I have three separate presentations.
I think we can do just one quasi judicial announcement.
Okay.
Because we can say for all the quasi judicial.
And do all three of them at the same time?
We, we, we don't have.
Vote on each one separately.
If, I would recommend, I read the quasi judicial, then I read the title of the first ordinance. Have Renee do, do her presentation, vote on the ordinance, then we'll do the second one and just go through them.
Do you want to do the rezoning? I mean, the site plan or do you want to do the second reading ones?
Just do the second reading ones first.
First, yes. So, Mr. Salzman, go ahead and read the ordinance by title and then give the, our regular routine explanation of quasi judicial, swear anybody in and, and see if there's any. see if there's any ex parte communication conflicts of interest.
Ordinance twenty-two-three, twenty-nine, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas for zero point eight-eight acres, more or less, of real property located at one-two-zero-one Gulf Road on the southwest corner of Gulf Road and Tarpon Drive from neighborhood business, NB District, to public semi-public, P slash SP District, providing for findings, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Okay.
Uh, and just for the record, this is second reading. Um, this was published in Tampa Bay Times on January third, twenty-twenty-four and May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity at a quasi judicial hearing. It is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial and relevant, relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. If anyone's going to testify, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Um, city manager LaCorus, could I have Ms. Vincent start?
Yes, Renee, please go to presentation.
Thank you. I'll be very brief on this. Uh, the summary of the request is on the screen. This is application uh, twenty-three, one thirty-seven, ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-nine. This is the rezoning, second reading of, yes, sir.
Any ex parte communications with anyone?
Other than the one that's already been noticed.
Okay, okay, so we're clear then?
For the record.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, this is the rezoning uh, request for the property at twelve oh one Gulf Road, which is the proposed uh, new fire station property. The current uh, zoning on the property is neighborhood business and the proposed zoning is public semi-public. There is uh, there's been no new information to add to the record since first reading and staff recommendation is to approve uh, without any changes since first reading.
Do you want to go ahead and make your presentation or?
That's, I mean, it's second reading, so there's really no.
Oh, the ordinance, okay.
Went through the summary of the request. I'm not going to go through it in the interest of time unless there's questions specifically for the rezoning.
That's fair. Any questions by the commission? Okay, um, Ms. Vincent, would you like to enter your report into evidence?
Yes, the report and all the attachments to the agenda.
Okay, the uh, public comments, are there any public comments on this particular matter, this part of the new fire station on Gulf Road? Okay. Um, I'm going to go ahead and uh, any closing comments, summation, Ms. Vincent?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any commissioner have any comments? Okay, may I have a motion to approve um?
So moved.
Or, well, I want to state the ordinance number, um, ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-nine.
So moved.
Tagger.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Coianis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiottis?
Yes, um, so then we're going to go ahead and move on to ordinance twenty-two-three dash twenty-eight.
Ordinance twenty-two-three, twenty-eight, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for zero point eight-eight acres, more or less, of real property located at one-two-zero-one Gulf Road on the southwest corner of Gulf Road and Tarpon Drive from commercial neighborhood CN designation to institutional I designation, providing for findings, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Ordinance twenty-two-three, twenty-eight on second reading, published in the Tampa Bay Times on November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three and May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, Ms. Vincent?
Thank you. So this is application twenty-three dash one thirty-seven, ordinance twenty-two-three dash twenty-eight, future land use map amendment. Um, again, this is a companion amendment to the rezoning that you uh, just approved. Um, amending the land use map from the designation of commercial neighborhood to institutional uh, for the proposed in support of the proposed fire station at twelve oh one Gulf Road. Um, we did transmit this to the state and to um, the county by planning authority. Everything has been wrapped up there, so this is properly back before you for second reading. And again, there's no new information on this application to enter into the record.
Okay, thank you. Um, any commissioners have any questions? Any public comments? Okay, I'm going to close the public site, section of the uh, meeting and um, um, uh, go to um, ask for a um, well, no questions or comments, so may I have a motion to approve and a second on ordinance twenty-two-three dash twenty-eight?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Coianis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiottis?
Yes, um, item C is going to be a little more detailed, Ms. Vincent?
Yes.
Go ahead and proceed, please. Uh, Mr. Salzman?
Resolution twenty-two-four thirteen, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application twenty-four dash zero two, requesting site plan approval to allow for an emergency service facility building, fire station totaling eight thousand two hundred and fifty square feet of gross floor area and including parking and other site improvements on property located at one-two-zero-one Gulf Road in the neighborhood business NB zoning district, providing for findings, providing for conditions and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Ms. Vincent?
Something just occurred to me right off the top of the head. Um, the city attorney, um, the zoning is reflected in that when it was drafted, it was neighborhood business, but it is now um, public semi-public, so we need to make that correction. There's no advertising on this. So I think we're okay to just make that change to the, to the resolution on the zoning designation, because they just approved the, the second reading.
No, no, that's not a problem.
So apologize for that. So this is application twenty-four dash zero two, site plan approval for uh, the Tarpon Springs Fire Station seventy on twelve oh one Gulf Road. The, as we stated, you just approved the changes to the land use and the zoning. The property contains about thirty-eight thousand five hundred square feet. This is the site um, on Gulf Road. Uh, Jimmy's Neighborhood Restaurant is on, uh, to the west, um, and then there's a daycare facility to the east. This is just an aerial photograph of the site with the zoning overlay. This is an aerial photograph with uh, just a little bit more context. And I'll go through these fairly quickly. This is a um, view for, to the site uh, from Gulf Road. And this is an overlay of the boundary survey. So the site plan itself, and I apologize, but this is, looks a little um, wonky, uh, north is actually uh, to the left of the screen um, to fit this on here, so uh, this is Gulf Road and then this is Tarpon Road here. So the proposed building, um, you can see is kind of outlined, shadowed, uh, colored in gray. The orangish tan color are the impervious areas with the drive accesses and driveways and parking. Um, I'll also note that as part of the construction, three parking spaces are proposed to be provided on Tarpon Road um, as well as a sidewalk network um, along Tarpon Road um, and along Gulf Road itself. Uh, the landscaping and buffering plan uh, does include the buffering for the um, the Jimmy's Neighborhood Restaurant um, adjacent. There's a six foot, um, I believe six foot, it could even be eight, eight foot vinyl fencing along here um, and landscaping um, along the residential buffers in the back, along with the stormwater uh, stormwater pond is a buffer there. Um, regarding the parking for the um, uh, for the site, I'll just back up a little bit. Um, we based this on actual need versus, you know, running a strict parking calculation, so we actually came up with thirteen spaces uh, really being needed and sixteen are being provided. So under our site plan review criteria, uh, we do note, this is, again, this was written originally under the neighborhood business district standards. The uh, the application did receive a variance in the past for the, a floor area variance and an impervious surface ratio variance. With the change in the zoning now to um, public semi-public, that really negates the need for that variance, but so now nothing will be non-conforming moving forward. Uh, there are no issues with the ability of the city to provide uh, facilities uh, for the, for the, for the project. Um, under the building codes, I just wanted to note that this will be constructed to a category three standard and a first finished floor elevation at, at least two feet above base flood, flood elevation. The staff recommendation is to approve. Um, there were several conditions on the permit. I'll just read these. Um, I'll kind of summarize them. Uh, a roadway connection permit from Pinellas County needs to be obtained. Um, the contractor needs to verify field utilities um, and provide notice to the city prior to, prior to doing any work. This has become a new standard comment that would reply to any contractor, whether it's the city or um, a private developer. Uh, number three is this, construction plans have to be consistent with the site plan. The developer's responsible for meeting the minimums of the land development code. Um, and that the site plan shall expire at six months from the effective date unless a building permit has been obtained. Um, so that's a new requirement since we changed the expiration uh, for site plans. Planning and zoning board reviewed this on April fifteenth and did recommend approval with the full board present. Uh, that was a unanimous vote and there was no public comment on the item. Uh, so with that, I'll stop and take questions and staff recommendation is to approve as presented.
Okay. Let me ask, um, any commissioners having questions?
Yes.
Uh, you want to say something?
Yeah, just comments and for discussion.
Okay, uh, well, let me ask a question. I have a question. You have comments or questions?
Go ahead, Phil.
All right, um, we talked a little bit today, um, and I probably should have mentioned that as ex parte communications with uh, Ms. Vincent concerning the um, the site plan as far as uh, uh, the, the location of the building and that sort of thing. The one question I had was the um, the condition of Tarpon Drive and, and I think you can, it gave me an idea that maybe it wasn't so good. And um, I, I, would, would you, let me ask Scott or Mr. Robinson, would y'all know any better as far as what the condition of Tarpon Drive is? All right, the reason why I'm asking is it's important, I believe, that if we put this brand new station up there and we've got this road that is pretty much potholed and everything up, we're going to have our, our, our basically first responder equipment driving through there and everything, so I'd, I'd like there, ask the commission if it's not in good shape for some consideration to uh, reconstruct that and there's a reason for that as well. So do you have any idea of what that road's like?
The last time I was out there, it looked like it was in acceptable shape, but it's probably something we could reevaluate, including the project if we need to. At worst, it'd be just me milling and resurfing, resurfacing probably the first, you know, two hundred feet or so.
All right, all right, let, let's go, let's continue on with the meeting. Um, Commissioner Kulyas, do you have some questions then?
Yes, I want to focus on uh, it is page nine where it's got the, the red outline with the fence. Yes. So that red outline is the, the, the six foot fence?
Is it a six or?
I, I believe it's six, but I'm not a hundred percent sure with that right now, but I think it's six.
Six foot, pick it.
And um, the trees right there, um, and I know you guys are looking at landscaping, but can those trees be removed and placed somewhere else in that area to fit the landscape? Because ideally, I think there should be a buffer that, that helps create a, a mutual fence between the property and to create possibly a little bit of a, a parallel situation for, for the business owner. And so, I mean, this has been talked about for a couple of years where, where I even brought it up too, as we're mending fences between properties and stuff and, and neighbors. It, it's important to understand that the, the city was one of the few people to be able to use this site, you know, and so just trying to help out the situation from, from outside and understanding that, that there there is going to be an effect of traffic flow and, or parking situation and um, I just don't see where it's busy on Thursday, Friday and Saturday in that area, especially during the football season where some of those, you know, some of the parking that's on that borderline, that property line, um, is going to be lost and I know it's a public building. I know it's, you know, its own property in a sense, but I, I just feel like there could have been another way to accommodate a, a, a smoother transition between the properties and that necessity that it's zoned for in the business right next to it, so uh, those are really my only suggestions. Um, can participate much than that, but I, I'd like to see those trees that are on the west end possibly, possibly removed and placed somewhere else and that red fence line to at least go back a couple of feet. And so I, I think it'd go a long ways in uh, looking out for, for one another, so, thank you.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, the, so we have a minimum parking lot buffer requirement in the land development code, so that's what this, this buffering and planting is. It serves, it's a land development code requirement. So to remove it would require some type of a variance or something like that and I, so it, it's, it is a code requirement to buffer, in, buffer parking lots. Um, when new parking lots um, on their, on their perimeters, so that's why it's there.
Let me just ask you, um, we also had that conversation with the sidewalk and I understand the rationale that came, uh, there, there was basically the, the sidewalk on the um, east side of uh, the building and possibly relocating that across the street. I understand what the, the constraints are with that. I, I, and, and then the idea would be to, to shift the building over a little bit to the north, um, I'm sorry, to the, to the east a little bit and, and kind of pick up on what uh, Commissioner Kulya was saying that would help. Uh, but, but I don't think that that, um, as you said, that's not going to work because of the way that the uh, the, the childcare situation is situated right now and, and because of their parking. The uh, the big question though, again, gets back to um, Tarpon Drive and its condition and if, if, if it's a poor condition, I, I honestly, I mean, regardless of what the um, uh, of, of what we're talking about right now, I, if we're going to put this brand new six million dollar fire station right there, I'd rather somebody take a look at the condition of that road and, and if, and if it needs to be, maybe we need to rework that road so that it's a finished road. Um, so that our, our equipment gets in and out without any trouble. Um, and also if there's any flooding issues on that road as well and um, and then that may give us an opportunity to take a look at that sidewalk again as part of that effort. That, that's, the only reason I'm bringing this up is because um, I suspected that might be an issue tonight on this particular, uh, on this uh, site plan. Do you, go ahead.
Sure, if I can comment on that. Uh, we are really close on the budget. Like, it's really tight. But what I would suggest is that maybe we could do, um, I could have one of the engineer records do, engineer record contractors do a um, a preliminary design to get a cost that we could put in as an additive alternate into the bid. So if, if the project can afford it, then we would include it.
I, in fairness, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't talk to you because I, it was just a conversation that I had with. In fairness, I didn't, I didn't talk to you because I, it was just a conversation that I had with Ms. Vincent. Remember I asked?
Yes, yes.
So that would be fine. I, I just, and, and then, but what we would, how? Okay. So the idea would be, let me get this straight, and this is a question in the form of a question. We'd go with this site plan, do an add alternate on the road. But then, how would we deal with the sidewalk and the reconfiguring if we had to to move that, that, the fire station a little further to the east?
So I'll address that. There's two constraints related to moving it to the east a little further. The first is an existing thirty-inch RCP stormwater pipe. It runs right underneath the sidewalk. So that doesn't really give us much room. And then we have to add another stormwater pipe in along that corridor for, for the onsite drainage. So we have two large stormwater pipes and we, we just don't have the room to shift the building.
You've answered, we've done what we can. Okay, thank you. So basically, we would go ahead and, and adopt this site plan. Adopt the site plan, do an add alt as far as reconstructing tarp and drive in that area. And, okay, I understand that. And getting back to Commissioner Cuyas' comment about that sign, it would, the fence would take a variance on this site plan?
It, it would. It's a code requirement to have that buffer for that parking lot. I'll take a second look at it, but, yeah.
But the board of, but would it be in a board of adjustment issue?
Correct, it would.
But that could be done separately, right?
It, it could, it, it can, yes, but, I mean.
Is it something we would want to do?
I don't want to commit to off the top. Let me, let me look at it and.
Vincent, it was a rhetorical question. Yeah, so that would be up to the commission to decide whether they would want to do that, not.
Yes, I mean.
Okay, that, those were my questions. Anybody else? Nothing?
Mayor, so it'd be up to this commission minus myself whether they would go to the board of adjustments for the fencing issue?
If, if, you want to weigh in on this?
I, I think what it'd be is Renee, you want to, Renee, you want to look at it? And then we bring that back about going for the, we bring that back to the board. So she'd have all the information about the variance and what it would do. And we'd bring that back and this board would, would make a decision on that, would it take it there?
And really, Fire Chief Young, you need to weigh in on this item too, so.
So, we have Nick McRus and myself met with Jimmy's back in April about this. And we sat down with him at his restaurant, showed him the plans, what was going on. He was okay with what was happening. He understood what was happening and the sight lines and everything. We also told him that with regard to the fence, the last meeting we had with the architects, we moved that fence in as far as we could to give them as much room as they could on that side to do some type of parking if they needed to. The bump out there is only because there's a door right there that has to have access and they still have to have access to get around the building to do work and whatever. So we did move that fence in probably three feet or better already. So we have done what we could to accommodate Jimmy's.
Would, would you do both, Mr., or Commissioner Cuyan, myself, a courtesy? Check with Jimmy again and see whether that would be important to him before we, you know, before we go forward?
Is that? We, we did, you're talking about the fence move?
Yes.
We did talk to him.
Not moving the fence, but you were talking about cutting it down?
Well, yeah, I'm just referring to, and I know you guys went and asked him and stuff, but you know, there's a difference when a business owner's trying to work with the city and, you know, they, they give good effort towards the community. We know that, but it's, you know, if you ask a couple more detailed questions about percentages of parking on weekends and, and stuff like that, it does have a detriment to that business. And it's, you know, and I just leave it at that.
No, no, let the city manager, I mean, I, I think he's got an idea.
Yes, yes, I think we could, how, how we can do that. We, we've, we've got the variance thing in the back, but I think maybe we could help him, Bob. Not that we can do a design for it. So I think if we look at that area he's got and maybe help with some suggestions, obviously we can't do what he can do for park, how he can get parking in those spaces on a different angle or something. Maybe, and I think that's a, that's an appropriate expenditure of money to do, to give him the ideas of, of possibly looking at that. And if there's, you know, you can put parallel here or you could angle something soon. Just see if he has some options to give. There may be none, but if we could just look at that cursory and see what space he has in the drive-out, what space he's got towards the fence and how he could config, you know, some ideas of how he could configure and how many cars he could get along there. And, and if we can do it without the variance and doing it back or, or we'd have to do it and let's, let's have that option on the table and stuff to look at when we, so that'll help us decide if we need to ask the board if they want to come with the variance or we've got something that would meet the requirements, meet the code, meet everything else. Is there a way to do that and give him an appropriate ability to park cars in there and still have the drive-through?
Sure, and just to make sure I'm understanding, you're looking for maybe a conceptual parking analysis of, of his property and how he could align the parking.
On our terms and by code, you know, which, which would not be an expenditure of money to say this is what you can do presently. And then that may be something that he's happier with when he sees that. And we don't have to deal with the variance issue. But, you know, we've always got, we still have Renee researching the, the part that the board wants to go to variance, but we also look at what he can do in there and not violate, you know, how much traffic lane he needs for traffic to go, how, that he's not violating any of the city codes of what he's going to put parking in there and maybe give him some just, you know, rudimentary help by our codes to see what he could get in there.
Okay, sure.
I appreciate Steph looking into this, you know, it's, it's a one-time situation and it, it's important. So, thank you all.
Okay, Vice Mayor Eisner, I just knew you got your light on. So my comment on this, Bob, I was, I wanted you to hear this. I, I eat there often and I park on that side. And there is possibly no way you can do what is existing right now. He does perpendicular parking and that's how he gets most of his cars in there. Once this goes into play, he would have to go from perpendicular parking to parallel parking because there's just not enough room between his building and where his property line ends. So, I mean, it comes down to brass tacks. If we can't get rid of the fence and we can't get rid of the trees and we can't move this building forward, it's going to be parallel parking. I don't care how you flip this around, you can't get a square peg in a round hole. And that's what it's coming down to. I personally would love to have him have as much parking as possible. From what I'm looking at, I don't see it possible. I'm, you know, happy for you to go and investigate it. I would love to have him have it the way he's had it. I just don't see it. You're taking twenty, twenty-foot, twenty-two-foot cars and trucks and trying to put it alongside at least ten or twelve feet. So off of his building, you're talking about twenty-two feet minimum. There is not twenty-two feet between it. So it's just, it's, the measurements aren't there no matter how you flip this around. And that's why. I think the idea is whether he could even do parallel parking. Well, he could do parallel parking, then that would be room. Maybe. That's, that's. That's the whole idea. It's just maybe, that, that's the whole idea. It's close and, you know, it's just, it's tight going around there. That's why on the other side, on the west side, he's always got people parking there as well. You know, yeah. It, it's, it's a tough, tough situation. You know, he's, he's got to, you know, make poorer food because it's delicious. Well, no, what, what I'm getting at by this is, is kind of the same issue I had with the Orange Street. And let's finish up with the questions and then we'll do the comments. So, so are there any of the questions for Mr. Robinson, Ms. Vincent, or Fire Chief Young? Okay, let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments? And we'll have that discussion as part of the discussion part, okay? Mr. Maury, are there any remote access comments?
We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, I'm just going to go ahead and close the public hearing. What I was getting at, going back to commission comments now, was that like your one street project, I mean Court Street project that we did, you, you know, there's certain minimum standards that you have for parking. That's all. And, and what I was getting, if there's an accident, if we, if we, if he doesn't have the sufficient room that, for standard parking and there's an accident, that could be an issue for him as a, as a business person. And so the whole idea was just let our staff just take a quick look at it the way you describe it. And if there's some wiggle room, fine. If there's not, at least we took a look at it.
Sure.
Yeah, that's all. I don't think it's the idea of trying to preserve what we've got right now. I, I, that just, you know.
I'm just there all the time and I know it's just not there.
I, I, I know, I know. I'm just trying to, from my perspective, make sure that we don't create a mess for the next-door neighbor with, if we had an opportunity to, to do something else, that's all. Is there any other comments from the commission? The staff, is it clear what we, I know sometimes we can confuse you guys and it's been kind of a long night. But Ms. Vincent, are you clear on what we're talking about? Okay, city manager?
Yes.
Thanks. Is there a motion to approve the resolution twenty-twenty-four dash thirteen, site plan approval?
So move.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyanis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vatico.
Yes. Okay, the last, item fourteen's deferred. So the last item is Resolution twenty-twenty-four dash sixteen, Designating Certain Officials As Authorized Signatories On Negotiable Instruments Of The City. Let me just, it, it's a little convoluted the way it's presented. Mr. Salzman, go ahead and read the resolution by title, please.
Resolution twenty-twenty-four sixteen, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Designating Certain Officials As Authorized Signatories On Negotiable Instruments Of The City Of Tarpon Springs.
Okay. What our city rules is that we require basically designation of individuals to sign formally, officially. One of them is the vice mayor. When we did that discussion on the vice mayor and, and established it as one-third, 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 I know there was a whole lot of discussion after the, you know, after the resolution was approved. But what you see in the backup is actually the resolution that was voted on and approved by the commission. And so if there's any changes from that, it's going to be the June fourth meeting because the June sixth meeting would be the end of that June, the, the, the end of that one-third time period, I guess is what I'm getting at. Is that right?
Yes, this would go into effect what you're approving tonight would go into effect June sixth. Would you be after the June fourth?
Right, so what you're seeing is not anything that's being proposed is actually, that's the way that actually exists right now. So let me go ahead and, do, do you want to discuss this any further?
No, I told, I told Ron because I anticipated that I'd cover for him. Again, you, you explained that this is, this is required. If there's change in vice mayor, this signature is required by Ron Herring for the checks and stuff, so.
This is not, this is not discussing vice mayor?
No, this is the signatory requirement that we have of, for the city to refill and it's by resolution and has, and it's approved for change. Well, we have to do it in five months later when it changes again, we have to do this again.
Okay, let's go to public comment. Are there any public comments on this? Mr. Maury, are there any remote access comments?
We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, commission comments, any commissioner comments, vice mayor, Commissioner Cuyas? Commissioner Cuyanis, no. Okay, is there a motion to approve in a second, please?
So move second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyanis?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vatico.
Yes. Okay. That ends the, the regular agenda. Let's go ahead and move on to board and staff comments. Vice Mayor Eisner?
I get first?
Yeah, do you have anything?
But you asked for staff first.
Oh, sorry. It's been a long night.
Yeah, it's okay. I'm here to support you.
Assistant Chief Rogero?
No, we have nothing at this time.
Thank you.
Mr. Salzman?
Yes, I'm requesting a shade meeting on the trash case. Hopefully sometime next week if possible. I know we could, we could have Trish schedule, help us schedule that. I think it'll take between a half hour and an hour. We finally got a proposal on settlement. So I just got it, so I'm asking for the meeting.
Do you think an hour was going to do it?
I think an hour.
One hour, okay. Did you want to set a meeting date or you want, or you want Trish to do that?
Probably I'd, I'd ask you to, to, to send to Trish since I would be got send to her if there are times available in the, you know, I don't know how you want to do it, like we did last. I forgot what time it was, an afternoon or a morning one last one that was set up.
The last one we did?
Yeah.
I think, was that a morning one?
Yeah, I mean, if there's a morning or afternoon you're available, instead, because I know the evenings with meetings and stuff, I guess it'd be in a little room, but maybe just letting know if there's times next week where you're not available. If there's, for instance, mornings or afternoons that works out. And then we can kind of coordinate where everybody can't, where everybody can't attend on a morning, late afternoon one. And then we can look what the dates are that's common, that's not a conflict between y'all. If you could all get those to Trish tomorrow.
You want to do it? You said within the.
I'd like to do it next week if possible.
Not this week, but the June third week, week of June third?
Yes, yes.
That should give plenty of time. Do you have any preferred dates or anything like that for yourself?
No, I'll contact Trish because I have to contact her on the other thing anyway.
Yeah, you can give Trish also that, that, if there's afternoons, mornings, or early evenings that you're not available also. So we can do that into some options.
I think it's just, well, we have, yeah, okay.
Okay, so. So the week of June third, we're targeting that for a shade meeting for one hour per Mr. Salzman's request. Okay, thank you, Mr. Salzman. City manager, of course.
I just, I'm, I know someone else might comment on, but it was just real good to see the crowd at that Memorial Day ceremony this week. I said at Veterans Day, that Veterans Day, I thought it was the biggest crowd. For Veterans Day, I'm pretty sure since I've been the, almost everyone except one, I think I was banged up at of all the time is the biggest crowd for Memorial Day. I got there the usual time I did to get up close parking, especially with my wheel being out and a little injured and there wasn't any place to park at that time. But I remember the days when we were at that ceremony and the ceremony was so meaningful and stuff, but the attendance was sparse because you got the big one at Curly Hill, you got big ones all over. We have taken that ceremony and the locals and others that even aren't local are coming to our ceremony. And just to look out from the days where maybe twenty or thirty and the Elks had a lot of food that they had to take back. And from this time where they ran out of food because the crowd was so big and the parking was. So we have really grown that and, and it's a, to the pleas, to everybody that organizes it. We are now a place to go for both ceremonies. And again, I've been with the crowds of twenty, twenty-five and being there with a crowd for especially what the occasion was was just kind of a highlight for me to see in that and be involved in that. And of course, the professional presentation of, of what we did at the ceremony, I think, brings them back. So that was a real proud moment for us and for me and I think for Tarpon Springs to, to see that happen.
It's a beautiful, beautiful day. Does Jacobs anything? Okay. Vice Mayor Eisner?
I just think it started off with a big bang.
Yeah. You're talking about the accident.
Yeah, there was a big accident. All kidding aside, it was a, a really pleasant memorial. I, I liked what everyone had to say. It was good to see all the people coming together. I mean, you know, it was just great. I, I really did also want to come back to that Sunday, driving by, seeing these three guys working what they had to do. The city is, sometimes we just take things for granted. And, you know, I, I did what they were doing with less equipment, but I mean, I did that more in a residential. They were doing it on a commercial basis. And I just had to stop to, you know, thank them and appreciate. And that's why I wanted to say it at the beginning because as much as I like you all out there, less ears would hear it. So that's why I wanted to say it at first. But it was good. The other thing, and last but not least, I, I just wish that all the commissioners would speak for themselves. The other thing, and last but not least, I, I just wish that all the commissioners would speak for themselves and not speak for the commission as a whole. Or, you know, make innuendos, or I heard ex-vice mayor speak about being confronted. He didn't use any names, and then, of course, here on the board, we're right away, you know, the guilty hands are being put up. None of this has to be done, you know, it's just try to act like you're a commissioner, and, you know, we wouldn't have a problem, but it is what it is. I, I can't, you can't teach the unteachable, so, you know, you gotta have to learn your place. That's all I wanna say.
Thank you. Commissioner Culliar?
We did have a great Memorial Day celebration, as well as able to go down to Sunset Beach and hang out for a couple hours. I wanna thank the police department. They had a, they had a nice presence out there, but everybody was enjoying themselves, and it was a good thing to see. There was a lot of barbecue going on and a, a great way to celebrate. But I did wanna follow up with former elected official, resigned Craig Lunt. You know, when there are times when you run for office, you have to understand, you have to have transparent conversations. And you can't run away from a difficult situation. And so, you know, the people put trust in you. And they put, put trust in you that you would run for office. And the second time, you ran unopposed, 'cause the people trusted you. And so, when asked, you even stated, "You don't know me an explanation." Well, fine, you don't owe me an explanation. But you sure do owe the everyday citizens of Tarpon Springs an explanation. And your explanation didn't come until you were told you needed to explain, which was weeks, if not months later. You had six months to do your little shell corporations and hide whatever you needed to hide. But because of your planning, you just didn't get around to it. And then, the mayor, out of respect, gave you a farewell. One of the most professional, knowledgeable farewells someone could give you. I can't even remember what month it was. But, again, you decided to send an email in, asking if you could run for mayor. And I have to wonder, off the back of your mind, during this whole pageantry and participation trophies, if you had intentions on doing that anyways. And so, it's disappointing that you've created instability through, we had to do through appointment, and I'm very thankful we have Commissioner DiDonato up here. Straightforward, he comes, he votes as he needs. But we have to have a special election now. It's instability. And so, you obviously do owe the people of Tarpon Springs an explanation. You decided you didn't wanna do it until you knew you had to. And so, you obviously didn't plan right on your exit strategy, or you thought you were gonna come back in, and you didn't read your ability to come back in through resignation. So, this community put their time to thank you, but for whatever reason, you decided, you thought you were interested in running again. You had plenty of time, sir. Plenty of time. And the people trusted you. And you resigned. And you also resigned in probably the shortest term someone can serve for two consecutive years, two consecutive terms. So, I'm transparent. I don't care if some of you guys going your little corners and amongst the commissioners and huddle and speak among yourselves, that's not me. But, these residents are owed an apology by you. And you talk about being berated. No one berated you. No different from how you try to berate people up here. And so, you put yourself in public office, you decided to do whatever situation you had. To me, it didn't come out as trustworthy, deceitful. Those are my thoughts on it, and a lot of people's thoughts. But again, you still didn't tell the people of Tarpon Springs, until you, you decided to today. And so, the real victims, not you, never was you, are the citizens of Tarpon Springs. They were left and someone that was supposed to elect to make proper decisions. And so, the instability that was caused during this time, when we could've focused on other issues, is something you're gonna have to live with. But to have the nerve to ask from a couple weeks later that you were interested in running for mayor now is absolutely wrong. So I hope you take it and you improve on yourself when it comes to representing the citizens, because this is a straightforward concept. There's no misleading, there's no decoy stuff. So, be as transparent as you can in the future, and when you have intentions that you fully didn't disclose to the people, do a better job planning on it next time. I don't, I don't like resignations only to see those type of questions and being asked later, and the residents aren't happy about it. So that's all I have to say for now on that. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner Colianis?
I wanna thank Vice Mayor Eisner for doing a stand-up job in your absence. He handled all the events in a professional and honorable manner, and I just wanna thank him for that.
Thank you.
That's it.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I just will echo the City Manager's comments about the ceremony Monday. It was, it was heartfelt by me as one who has served, and, and I just wanna thank everyone that had anything at all to do with that, or happening. It was great.
I, um, for myself, I wanna thank Vice Mayor Eisner for standing in and, and and doing what he had to do. And it was very nice of you. You didn't take my name in vain.
It was easy.
Yeah, I know, it's easy. So thanks, Mike. Also, the Elks Club did an outstanding job. They're there. Our honor guard honors us whenever they're doing their thing, and, and they also have to stand in that heat, recognizing that it is a somber day, and that's, you know, it's nothing compared to what many that have been in battle have to endure, but nevertheless, it's, it, it's, we do it right when we do do it. And I think is, was it you that were telling me that people have options of going elsewhere, but they come to Tarpon Springs because they know we're more formal in the way we do it. So, and I'm, I'm very proud of that. That, that's, that's tradition, that's a hometown tradition. And, and that works out well. The trip to Greece was actually an eye-opener for me, Sister City trip for Egena. From the moment we arrived on Egena, it was just non-stop, and, and I'm not sure what we're gonna do for them when they come over here. But we, I learned a lot of things as far as the connection between Egena and Tarpon Springs. Also, I did stop in to Hedra, we stayed there a couple of days. I did talk to the mayor there in Hedra. And at some point, I'm hoping in the near future, I know we've got a lot, but I'd like to discuss some policy concerning sister cities. I know that's, we're not the drivers on that, it's the Sister Cities organization, but we actually have to authorize that by resolution. And we've got eight sister cities right now, and honestly, when you go to the ones that actually put Tarpon Springs on the map, like Kalimno, Egena, Haoki, and Simi, those people are not, those families are not just in town, but they're out at Cycladia Cemetery too. And they're not going back home. Some of these other places, I don't even know that we got anybody here in town, other than one or two families, and, and there's nothing like we would have out at Cycladia with these other communities, and, and quite frankly, there's, I mean, I could say a lot about that, but I'll, I'm gonna save that when we do have that discussion and see if the commission wants to do anything. I, I know we need to do a little homework on that, and certainly bring the Sister Cities organization in on it too, before we do anything, but carrying eight sister cities, I, I think is a lot of, of, especially if there's some expectations on the part of the city in Greece of expecting something from Tarpon Springs. And the interest is really not there. I don't know, so we have to talk about that. The, I, I wanna thank the commission for supporting that trip. Also wanna thank the residents of Tarpon Springs for allowing me to experience something like that. That, honestly, I, I can say that the duties of mayor is, 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 is important. You really kinda get wrapped up in any, in, into things, but this trip to Egena, especially when it involves, and by the way, the, the Egena thing started a few years ago before I was mayor, but it just happened the way it turned out that, that I, I was there, and it was the high, one of the highlights of my being mayor was attending this thing with Egena and the Sister City signing. Not, not so much the signing of it, but actually what I learned and actually felt from the residents there and a lot of others that we grew up with. The Emmanuel House, they have an Emmanuel House. George Emmanuel's father, there's a special home, historic home there. The owner there now, it was visited by Mitch Emmanuel. He shared stories with me when we had lunch. The icon when, that was given to the church by Saint Nicholas here by the Egenites, that church got burned in nineteen twenty-something, and then the icon was sent to Egena by Mr. Lausi, who a good friend of mine, George Protos, used to talk about him all the time. And so when you start hearing the things like that, and you start connecting that with these stories that people tell you, it, there's just, there's nothing, there is no money you can put on something like that. I mean, really, there is not. And, and when you've got another guy telling you that your family can't be from there, but it's there, and he tells you why, how they got to there, and then they, he tells you the nicknames of some of your family members and things like that, things that you've never known. So, anyway. Thank you all, and from the bottom of my heart, and Dolly enjoyed the trip as well. So, anyway, that's all I've got to say. Meeting adjourned at 10:47.